Oh, man, I, yeah, I got a pen.
One, two, one, two. Okay, I'm good.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is 6 o'clock PM. This meeting of the Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order. For the purposes of invocation, I'd like to give the floor to Councilman William Parker, Jr. to introduce our special guest this evening to deliver the invocation.
Thank you, Brother President. This afternoon, I would like to introduce you to Pastor Laura Kelsey. She passes the First Presbyterian Church in downtown Pontiac, who this month, I believe, on the 22nd, will be celebrating their 198th year anniversary. Would you please help me welcome Pastor Laura Kelsey?
Good evening. Thank you for that. And we are excited to be here for the, in our birthday year, the oldest church in Pontiac. So, thank you for inviting me tonight, Ms. Councilwoman Parker. Shall we pray? Almighty and everlasting God, we thank you for being here with us this evening. Oh, what a joy it is to be able to come together and to reflect upon your will for this, your community of Pontiac. We ask you, Lord, that you bless each one of our council persons who are here with us tonight and all that are gathered, that you may give them clear understanding of the right thing for this city and for your state of Michigan. We ask you, Lord, that you envelop us all and show us what we need to see and guide us so that we do justice, love kindness, and walk humbly with you, our God. Guide us tonight and guide us always. All this we ask in the name of our Lord. Shalom and amen.
Thank you. I'm now going to read the names of those that we've recently lost in our community before we have a moment of silence in their honor. Marcus Bass, Sr., Colin Burney, George Eric Bobo, often known as DJ Bobo, Felicia Bro, Sheila Brown, Yolanda Bondi-Kaden, Jenny Ruth Christie, Odessa Clay, Dr. Sandra Eden, Frank Ellison, Ruth Fuller, Denise Hamilton-Roberts, Tony Henderson Bay, Charlie Jefferson, Sr., Fancita Murphy, Robert Rice, Cynthia Rogers Pryor, Grace C., age 100 years, Harold Stiles, Asia Terry, James Vuga Vaughn, Sr., Pino Washington, Jr., Deborah Williams Moss, and Sadie Genie Woods. A moment of silence, please, in their honor and all those not named that our community has recently lost, including those in your family and your neighborhood. Thank you very much. We'll rise now for the Pledge of Allegiance. And then after the pledge, if somebody near the door can close the doors, when we have presenters, we don't, we prefer that no one go in and out of the doors just so that they can have a clear view and access and the people at home can see them uninterrupted. So, with that, the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now proceeding with the call of the role, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a call.
Thank you. All members present and voting, is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
I make a motion.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. That motion being properly moved and seconded, it's before us. Are there any amendments, changes, corrections, clarifications?
President, would you like to do corrections now or you want to wait till we get through the discussion part of a particular resolution?
If there's language for a resolution that would like to be changed, we would do that at that time unless you'd like it removed from the agenda. If there's a wish to remove something from the agenda now, it'd be a good idea.
No.
Okay. Any amendments? Hearing none. The speaker's list exhausted. The question before us is approval of this evening's agenda. On that motion, roll call Mr. Clerk.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
To move.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. No discussion on that motion. Roll call on approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We're now at Subcommittee Reports. There are seven subcommittees of this city council to help us handle the many varied topics of our work more efficiently. And as we begin this new term on the city council, what our plan is, is that each month on the second meeting of the month is when we'll provide verbal updates for all of the seven subcommittees, but that we will also, as the meetings happen through the month, consider under our consent agenda the written meeting minutes for those subcommittees. They are public meetings that are open to the public. And with that, Councilman Mikhail Goodman is chairman of the Communications Engagement and Operations Subcommittee. You have the floor for a few moments to bring us up to speed for this month.
Yeah. So, the Communications Engagement and Operations Subcommittee has not met for the council year yet. I did that on purpose to give the administration ample enough time to get the lay of the land when it comes to our important municipal infrastructure as it pertains to information technology or the IT department as well as cable. However, the first meeting will be happening on February 25th, which is actually my birthday, at 4:00 PM. And that will be the first meeting for the Subcommittee. And again, that was pushed back to give the administration time to get a grasp of everything that they were walking into.
Thank you, sir. Economic Development, Housing and Planning had their first meeting yesterday. The standing meetings for this Subcommittee are the first Monday of every month from 9:00 to 10:00 AM in the council conference room just to the side of the legislative chambers here. And what we tackled this month was engaging with the administration on structuring economic and community development and make sure that the needs of those many tasks are able to be handled. The council will soon hear a modernization of the rehabilitation agreements. We are actively looking at rental property registration fees and specifically the penalties or fines for those that do not follow through with the proper registration or flout the registration process. And we checked in on community development block grant funding, Habitat for Humanity collaboration, requesting from the Pontiac Housing Commission annual reports that are required, and also pursued the possibility of redevelopment-ready community status for Pontiac, which should come to this council very soon, as well as the possibility of neighborhood enterprise zones, upzoning, and corridor assessments, starting first with Huron Street, a major corridor in our community that needs a great deal of TLC, that this would be the first of many corridor studies that are overdue to see our major arteries, our commercial corridors, the support and improvements they need to boost economic development and planning. So, that's the main level of what was discussed. And a written report will be in next week's consent agenda. Again, the, right now, the standing meeting time for Economic Development, Housing and Planning Subcommittee is the first Monday of the month from 9:00 to 10:00 AM. Thank you. We're now at Facilities and Property. Chairman Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Currently, the Cities and Property Committee is currently working out the details for that particular committee, still trying to decide what falls into that particular committee. So, later this month, we should have a scheduled appointment, and I'm hoping that I can meet with the team from the administration to work out that particular committee. Thank you.
Thank you. For Finance and Personnel Subcommittee, Chairman Nicholson.
Our first Finance and Personnel Committee meeting is going to be this Thursday here in the Legislative Conference Room, 2:00 PM. Be hearing from the Finance Director and HR Director, getting more of an orientation and scope and setting up what our regular agenda items will be. So, we'll be right here next door this Thursday, 2:00 PM, and the next consent agenda will have our full report if you're not able to be there to meet.
Thank you. Law and the Courts Subcommittee, Chairman Parker.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Good afternoon, citizens of Pontiac. As you know, the Law and Courts Committee met on January 31st. We were, was a very invigorating discussion. As you understand, both civil and criminal matters are resolved in the district court. They handle issues from arrest warrants through preliminary examinations and civil infractions, including state and local municipal infractions. They do approximately about 1,500 felonies per year. They are currently in need of a couple of open positions. They have a heating issue that we're trying to get resolved, and they are continuing to perform and function even in this season of pandemic.
Thank you, sir. For the Parks, Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee, Chair James. This, this is for a verbal report as you see fit and then the written minutes we have just adopted for in our consent agenda. So, this is your opportunity each month to expand for the council's benefit or the community if there's anything you want to highlight.
Okay. First of all, our meetings are on the fourth Monday of the month, so the next meeting will be February the 28th. Our meetings are at 12:00 noon, and they take place in the Legislative Conference Room. Just to touch base on a few of the things that we talked about at our first meeting on March, on January, rather, the 24th, the, we met and we talked about the DNR funding for parks. First of all, if Ponti, if the city of Pontiac wanted to apply for a DNR grant, we could apply, but there would be penalties against us because of mitigation issues. The good news is that the Funding Department does have a plan, and we will be able to get that straightened out in 2022, and I am hoping that we would be able to apply for grants within the 2023 year. We have three public-private partnerships going on in the city, which is absolutely outstanding. We have the Matty Hatchet, Matty McKinney Hatchet Park redevelopment. We have the Skate Park Project, and we have the Clinton River Trail renovation. So, all three of those things are very great for the city of Pontiac. We discussed park maintenance in the, in the meeting. The mayor and deputy mayor both agree that they want to see improvement. We are, they are looking at the grass-cutting schedules as well as the trash collection schedules in the park. And also, the parks are expected to get new trash cans that will be a different color than what the current ones are so that you would not be able to take those cans and use them for residential use. So, hopefully, that will reduce some of the problems that we've had with losing the trash cans in our parks. I think that's about all that I have. If anyone has any additional questions about the parks, you can please call me at (248) 425-4663, or you can just email me at kathajames@pontiac.mi.us. Thank you. That's all I got.
Thank you. For the Public Safety, Health and Wellness Subcommittee, Chair Rutherford.
Good evening. Our first meeting will be tomorrow at 12:00 with our law enforcement Oakland County Sheriff and the Fire Department from Waterford. Our meeting is open to the public, and I am encouraging and asking all citizens to be there tomorrow so that we can engage with healthy conversations on how to make sure that we all work on the same team. Thank you so much.
Thank you. That concludes Subcommittee Reports. We're now at Special Presentations, the first of two presentations this evening. The presenter is Sharonda McDonald with CareHouse of Oakland County Nurturing Parenting Program. You are welcome to approach the dais and share with the community in this council about this program. Welcome to the Pontiac City Council.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having us. Like Michael was saying, I'm Sharonda McDonald, and I am with CareHouse of Oakland County, and I have my coworker here, Chaka McDonald, who will also be talking a little bit about the program. But for those of you who don't know much about CareHouse of Oakland County, I just want to give you a brief overview of what we do down at CareHouse. So, CareHouse, is everyone able to hear me well?
Yes.
Alrighty.
But we thank you for amplifying.
Okay.
You're doing great.
Thank you. So, CareHouse of Oakland County, it's a children's advocacy center. It provides services for victims of child abuse and neglect. CareHouse currently offers an array of programs, and they're focused on identification and treatment of child abuse victims and child abuse prevention. So, that's what we're going to be talking a little bit about with the nurturing parenting program. And our mission, of course, is to be a resource in the prevention of child abuse through advocacy, education, intervention, research, training, and treatment. So, we have all of those programs. We have a CASA program. We have intervention program, treatment, and therapy. And then also, we have the prevention program, which is community education, and that's what the nurturing parenting program falls under. We fall under prevention because as we provide parenting classes, we're providing education so that parents have better tools so they can effectively raise their children. So, here is our flyer right here. It looks great. I did, I did that myself, so I'm glad to see it looking good and the fonts perfectly aligned and everything. This nurturing parenting program runs like the school year. So, it starts in September, and it goes on like till January, and then we start again in March, and then we go to June. And so, we're off in the summers. And as you see here, it's for parents and caregivers, caregivers who have guardianship, parents who have been court-ordered, foster parents, stepparents, parents that are expecting. Dinner is provided each Thursday at 5:30. We provide transportation to parents. We also have been providing weekly incentives for them, so. So, I have Chaka McDonald here. He's going to tell you what a typical Thursday evening looks like for the nurturing parenting program.
Thank you. And so, yep, a typical evening for nurturing parenting is around 5:30. The parents and children come in, and we have dinner. So, we'll have dinner and dinner and fellowship, and then at promptly at 6:00, we'll have whatever lesson is for that week. So, there's a series of lessons. Every week, the lesson is new, pretty much building upon the previous one. So, we'll go from about 6, actually, 6:00 to 7:30 for instruction time. That's for parents and children. And then at 7:30, we conclude and bring everyone back together, and then the parents would, you know, they would pretty much dismiss from there, and everyone goes their way. But great, it is a great program. I'm not saying that just because I, of course, work there, but you see the growth in the families, you see the development, you see the, just, it's called nurturing parenting, but you can see how the nurturing, just, the facets of nurturing come through each, each component of the, of the lessons as we go on week by week. So, really great program.
So, we were wondering, we're not sure how it works, but if there's any questions we have, is that?
That often does happen after a special presentation, yes. Colleagues that have any questions or comments for this presentation? Councilman Parker?
I do have, certainly, it was a very good presentation, but how do we get a copy of that flyer so we can disseminate it to our constituents, our parishioners, and all of those who may want to know?
I have a copy right here, if you'd like a copy, and also, this can also be emailed. So, this is a hard copy if anyone needs a copy right now, and also through email. I can email a flyer out to you.
Would you please?
Sure, absolutely. And I can find your email address on the City Hall website?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And in a pinch, I'm happy to provide that to you if you need assistance with that. Can you reiterate for the community where CareHouse of Oakland County is located in District 1?
Alrighty. So, if any, I'm sure everyone is familiar with St. Joseph. I get it confused with St. John's. St. Joseph Hospital right here on Woodward. We're two buildings down from St. Joseph Hospital on Woodward. That's (447) 65 Woodward Avenue in Pontiac.
Very good. Other questions? Councilwoman James.
Yes. Could you also say again how a family can get involved in your service? How would they go about doing that?
Absolutely. So, because CareHouse has had the nurturing parenting program around for a while, we kind of have built up like a resource of networks of people, of organizations who regularly send their clients there. But if you call CareHouse of Oakland County, you can absolutely ask for my extension, and they'll put you right into my extension. You can do that yourself or a parent that you are referring as well. So, just basically calling CareHouse and asking about the nurturing parenting program, and they'll put you right into my voicemail or?
Would you like to share that number for those watching at home?
Absolutely. My direct cell phone number is (248) 318-4237. That's (248) 318-4237. You can also email me at S. McDonald, S.M.C.D.O.N.A.L.D@carehouse.org.
Thank you. Councilman Parker?
Yes, I, another question, is there an age requirement or age limit that you take?
That's an excellent question. I'm sorry that I omitted that. So, the nurturing parenting program is for parents who have children between the ages of five and 12. We realize that people, parents who have children between the ages of five and 12 also have smaller children, so we offer childcare. Childcare is free for ages four and under. So, it's typically for parents who have children between the ages of five and 12. The curriculum is geared towards that age group.
And last question. Do you offer any type of mental health, mental health issue? Do you deal with mental health, and do you help them to get through as you're nurturing? Do you have a connection to those who may have some mental instabilities to find service? I think that's where I might need to ask that question.
Right. And I'll answer that in two ways. So, the curriculum understands that a lot of the parents that are coming, so when the curriculum was founded in 1986 by Dr. Stephen A. Babelik, he was trying to reduce the incidences of child abuse and neglect at at-risk populations. So, we understand that a lot of populations that are considered at risk may have some trauma that's associated with that. So, the curriculum does address trauma and how to help parents deal with trauma, but as far as actual mental health clinical therapy is concerned, CareHouse of Oakland County does offer therapy, which is called the Treatment Program. Most of the time, it is for clients who have come through CareHouse, though, however.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Well, thank you so much for being here and for your presentation. I had the privilege of touring your current facility years ago when it first opened, and it's a remarkable facility, but even more remarkable is the, the work and the, and the service that you and your staff put into what you do. It's very difficult work, to say the least, but it's incredibly important work, and I'm just very grateful for, for you and everyone who works at CareHouse for the amazing, truly amazing work that you do. I know it's a real calling for those who do it, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart.
I appreciate that, and I would definitely refer that to the staff at CareHouse who put all the work in. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to have the floor before we move on? Thank you very much to you both for the presentation and the important work that you do in the community, and if those listening or watching in the audience this evening need assistance finding that information, you can, if nothing else, not only visit carehouse.org and, and access the contact information that was shared tonight, but the city council offices can connect you if you're still having difficulty finding the information that was presented tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having us.
We now move on to our second special presentation, the Pontiac Youth Recreation Strategy, and we give the floor now to Mayor Tim Grimal and Deputy Mayor Calphani Stevens.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. President. This is an incredibly important topic, as I think all of you know, and I know the public appreciates and recognizes as well. The public passed Youth Recreation Millage over three years ago, and not a whole lot has happened in that time. We recognize the urgency here. Our young people deserve to be invested in, and our administration, and I know city council as well, are committed to investing in our young people. That certainly includes sports and athletics, but it's about more than just sports and athletics. It's got to be about overall youth enrichment, art, music, after-school tutoring, computer coding and programming classes. We've got to give our young people every opportunity to live up to their full potential. We ended the lease at the old center on Gulf Drive, which was in a fairly remote location that was difficult to get to. The city had been paying $26,000 per month to lease that facility. We will be developing a comprehensive, long-term, permanent plan. It'll probably take us a few months to do that. And so, in the meantime, we're going to quickly establish an interim proposal and arrangement to carry us through the end of this fiscal year. The fiscal year ends June 30th. So, we're going to be standing up a robust program for the remaining months of this fiscal year that ends June 30th while we develop a long-term comprehensive plan in the next few months, and we'll be bringing that before council for your input and approval. We'll be soliciting your input as we develop that plan, and so we look forward to having those conversations with you, particularly, I defer to your judgment, Mr. President, but I assume in Chairman, Chairwoman, rather, James's committee that's focused on Parks and Rec, that that's probably an appropriate venue to have some of those discussions and solicit that input. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Deputy Mayor Stevens for some description of the details surrounding our interim youth recreation plan while we develop this longer-term permanent plan in the next few months. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So, as the mayor said, we, we have some immediate plans, and so those very, very immediate plans were to strengthen our ties with United Wholesale Mortgage. We've had some conversations with them. They were already hosting several programs there, so we immediately had some, some opportunity to work with them. But on a more intermediate basis, we partnered with the school district, and we are, we are currently working with them to stand up Harrington Elementary School as a site for after-school enrichment activities. We are, as the mayor said, we hope to identify by the end of the school year, a, a new, more permanent, robust program that will be not just at Harrington, but will be at multiple places. The transition team that the mayor has put together has, has already provided several amazing suggestions as far as summer programming in parks that we can put in place using the youth activity millage. But the very intermediate program, which we hope to have set up by the end of February and therefore beginning in March, is Harrington Elementary School for after-school programming between 4:00 and 7:00 PM. And we've already started with the school district on exactly how that will look and using the Youth Recreation Millage to provide the, the tutors and the enrichment staff for that program.
Thank you. With that, those colleagues that wish to have the floor for questions and feedback on this special presentation? President Protam Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Deputy Mayor, you said the time was 4:00 to 7:00 PM. How many days a week would that be? Would it be every?
We're currently looking at program, having programming every day that might, that might potentially change based on availability of staff.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Are we still going to use the staff that we currently have that are employed for us to work for the youth millage, and if so, when would they be notified?
Great question. Staff will be notified as we, so staff will be notified as we develop the actual after-school programming activities. So right now, the question is, on which day, every day we will have enrichment as far as schoolwork and tutoring. On which days will there be basketball? On which days will there be chess? On which days will there be fill-in-the-blank activities? And so based on those activities and availability of staff, we will be bringing staff back on to fill those slots.
You still have the floor, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Number two, for the insurance of the building and of the children, are we covering, have we, are we splitting the cost with the school district?
That is currently under discussion, but the way that it is currently set up, the intermediate letter of intent has a splitting cost.
So when we, do we have the, we have that information as of right now so that we can see how much it actually costs?
I can certainly provide you with that in the morning.
And lastly, what, we have a opening for the spot for the director. When and if will we be aggressively trying to pursue someone from our community and/or from the outside community to get in that position?
That is a great question, and that is part of the larger restructuring that the city is currently going through. I think it was in Councilman McGinnis's subcommittee meeting that I shared some preliminary thoughts that the city has, looking at the idea of what are the actual service delivery items that the city provides. Examples of that would be obviously policing, legal services, fire services, but additionally DPW services, and then Parks and Rec services. And so what we're doing in every service delivery area is going back and putting together more detailed, more detailed organization charts saying exactly what is the service that's being delivered, and do we have the, do we have the right job positions and the right personnel for that? And all of that will be worked out and presented as part of the next fiscal year budget.
Okay, thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? Councilwoman James, and then a point of personal privilege, they're indicating they're having difficulty hearing you, so you might want to hit both microphones. No, I'm sorry, Councilwoman James. So if you're able to either ensure that they're on or get closer to it, and I'm sorry for that inconvenience.
Unfortunately, I'm short, so. Okay. My question is, you've indicated that you plan to bring on-stream the Harrington School, and you're looking at a timeframe of this being temporary up until the end of this fiscal year, which is June, which already brings us into the spring/summer timeframe, the kids, you know, being out of school. Do you plan to bring on other schools as you go along, or are you just simply trying to put everything in this one school between the United Wholesale Mortgage facility and the one school?
So, no, Councilwoman, that is a great question. It is our hope to be able to, our original hope was to be able to centralize everything. City Hall is a very centralized location to the city, easy to access no matter what part of the city you're in. We don't believe that, at least in this year, we're going to be able to truly centralize, so we're looking at a more equitable distribution of where the activities will be, which means that it would not be at Jess Harrington, it would be at a number of different facilities going forward in the next fiscal year, but we just don't have the capacity to make that happen between now and June. Hopefully, we have the capacity to make that happen in September.
And Councilwoman James, does that conclude your questions?
Yes.
Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Yeah, just to underscore that point, we, between now and, you know, roughly the end of the school year or the end of our fiscal year, which line up pretty closely, although not identically, the goal is to have, as the deputy mayor explained, a robust sports and athletics program, especially at United Wholesale Mortgage, as well as broader programming at Harrington Elementary School. The location was arrived at through conversations with the school district. We're not opposed to having an additional school building. I don't think we have the resources to have this program at every school building in the school district. We're open to doing it potentially even in the short term at one other school building, but that's, all depends on available resources and whether we have the financial wherewithal to make that happen. Longer term, as part of a longer-term strategy, we'd like to have at least one major centralized location, as well as at least several satellite locations that could be school buildings, but they're not necessarily school buildings. They could include churches or other faith institutions. So again, the short to medium-term plan here, while we come up with a longer-term comprehensive solution and permanent plan, is to have the location at United Wholesale Mortgage and Harrington Elementary School, and possibly one additional elementary school, but we think that's really the extent of our capacity to set something up immediately in the short to medium term and get it off the ground with limited financial resources. The longer-term plan, this has been explained, is to have a one centralized location with some satellite locations at sites that are yet to be determined, and we want Council's input as we develop that plan.
Councilman Nicholson, you have the floor.
I know the previous council set aside dollars for development, and we, of course, have our millage. In our deep dive into the financials, have we been able to establish those millage, those millage dollars have been used in a way that there are still dollars existing, a reasonable amount of dollars existing? Those development dollars, are they intact as the previous council had wished?
So in looking at the current budget, there are a couple of developments that this council may not be aware of. The first is that the previous council chose not to levy the full millage in this fiscal year, so they only levied half of the millage. The second is, as the mayor has stated, we were spending $26,000 on leasing of the Pyrex facility. That is important because that actual lease was not budgeted for by the previous council. So when you take the lease payments and the insurance payments, as of January 31st, 2022, over $200,000 was spent on brick-and-mortar facility that was not anticipated by the previous council, and so we are trying everything that we can to, and the, I will say that, Councilman Nicholson, to further answer your question, yes, there is still fund balance in the youth rec fund, so we actually, you know, can continue to do the immediate things that the mayor is suggesting that we would like to try to do, but we are trying to be prudent and not just spend money because it's there, but to spend money in a way that is sustainable and is going to bring the greatest value to the greatest number of students and youth.
And to further answer that question?
Still have the floor?
I'm going to give you the floor, but I think he's, the mayor wanted to elaborate further to that question.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, there's...
Give away your time.
This is related to a broader troubling trend of the previous mayoral administration spending money in excess of the amounts budgeted by the previous council, and so as a result of that practice, there is not as much funding available as you would think, just looking at the city budget, because excessive amounts, in excess of budgeted amounts, were spent by the previous mayoral administration without City Council approval. In addition, we just recently discovered that the previous City Council had chosen not to levy some of the mills that were slated to be levied, which may factor into the amount that you're referencing, because the city did not collect as much revenue as you might think based on the stated number of mills approved by the citizens several years ago.
So answered the question on the operating side, we were in our orientation with several previous council members, told that there was a very large amount of money that was set aside or budgeted for development for future years, for development of an actual site. Are those dollars intact? Am I, am I wrong?
I'd like to give the floor to legislative council Sharp that might be able to...
I can speak to that. Actually, those dollars are still restricted. So the thought was to make sure that there was $3.2 million, I believe, restricted for a building. And the previous council actually did half the millage amount because of the fact that they didn't anticipate a freestanding location. Thank you.
So, and blame me for not knowing this, but when we, when the previous council restricted those dollars, does that, does that mean, I, it might sound like a silly question, but we've seen, what is the difference between restricted and somebody used those dollars in a way that the council didn't agree to in the past administration? Restricted dollars, does it still mean there's $3.2 million there?
Restricted dollars means that there should still be $3.2 million there. I have not gone specifically into the fund balance to look to see, is that $3.2 million still set aside? But based on what I have seen, that money should actually be there. I will actually pull the report tonight, and I will have it for you in the morning.
Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? A few points have been referenced. The previous council had voted explicitly that that location on Gulf Drive was to no longer, that lease was to no longer continue, and obviously, it did continue. Would the administration like to elaborate any further in terms of the city's extraction from that site? Is that concluded, complete? Is there any more financial burden? I know that you were obviously trying to move very swiftly in your first days to try and button that scenario up, but I'd like you to elaborate for this council and the community's benefit.
Yeah, our administration takes very seriously directives from City Council, both the current City Council, of course, but the previous City Council as well, and so one of our first orders of business was to stop this unauthorized spending on this lease at the Gulf Drive location. So we took office as mayor, as you did, on January 4th, so by the time you and I actually took office on January 4th, the month of January had already begun, and the city had already started occupying during the month of January that site on Gulf Drive. But we gave notice of the termination of the lease. The city had a lot of personal property in that space on Gulf Drive, which we needed to get out of the property. That personal property was all relocated off of that location at Gulf Drive by the end of January, and so the very last month that the city paid rent for that property was the month of January, which the city had already been occupying the property at the beginning of the month before we took office, and we did get all of our personal property out of that location by the end of January, such that we are not required to pay rent for February or beyond.
Thank you, and thank you to the staff that helped facilitate that swift movement to avoid further incurring of those financial obligations. Anyone else wish to have the floor on this special presentation? So to recap, the target is for March through June to have intermediate sites at Harrington Elementary School on Bay Street and the UWM Sports Complex on South Boulevard East for that period, and then in, as intrepid of a pace as you're able, you'll be bringing a more comprehensive strategy for that, the new fiscal year can ideally begin a new era of something more robust and stable.
Correct.
Very good. With that, that concludes the special presentation. We're now at recognition of elected officials. We have Jonathan Wertheimer here, who's on staff with our state representative Brenda Carter, to provide an update on her behalf, since I believe that they might be in session right now. But you have the floor, Mr. Wertheimer, on behalf of State Representative Carter.
Thank you, Councilman McGinnis. Good evening. As Councilman McGinnis said, my name is Jonathan Wertheimer, and I am the Policy Director for State Representative Brenda Carter. Thank you for allowing me to address our community this evening, council and mayor. Rep. Carter has a number of upcoming events next week that she would like to inform the community about. On February 14th, from 8:30 to 9:30, she will have a hybrid coffee hour via Facebook Live and in-person at Goldner Walsh Garden &amp; Home, located at 559 Orchard Lake Road, with special guests Tim Travis, who is the owner of Goldner Walsh, and Rick David, who is the president of the Pontiac Rotary Club. She will have a second hybrid coffee hour, also on February 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. This will be held at the House of Brunch in Auburn Hills, located at 3315 Auburn Road. She will be joined by special guest Ron Moniz, who is a former Auburn Hills City Councilman. Both coffee hours can be viewed online through the representatives' official Facebook page. Then on February 14th, again, from 11:30 to 12:30, she will host a virtual Valentine's Day Town Hall with special guest Beverly Thomas, who is a certified marriage counselor. This town hall is focused on forming loving, long-lasting relationships and can be viewed from the state representatives' Facebook page. Then on February 18th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., Rep. Carter will host a Property Tax Foreclosure Resource Fair at the Bowen Center here in Pontiac. The Michigan State Housing Development Authority, the Michigan Department of Insurance and Financial Services, Lakeshore Legal Aid, and the Area Agency on Aging Region 1B, among others, will be in attendance. If you are interested in finding more out about these events or others, I encourage you to sign up for Rep. Carter's e-news. You can sign up at her website, which is bcarter.how stems.com, or you can always give our office a phone call at 517-373-0475. That number again, 517-373-0475, or email us at brendacarter@house.mi.gov. That email again, brendacarter@house.mi.gov. Again, thank you for allowing me to address the community, council, and mayor this evening. I hope everyone has a good night.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to acknowledge that we had Pontiac City Council President Gil Garrett in the audience this evening, and I imagine he'll be, oh, what did I say? Oh, sorry. School Board President, Gil Garrett. And that concludes recognition of elected officials. We are now at agenda address, two-minute time limit. This is an opportunity for those in attendance this evening that would like to speak prior to us voting or considering a topic, another opportunity for you to weigh in and help shape stronger public policy. President Protam Carrington, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Ms. Gloria Miller, are you here to speak, agenda address, or public comment, ma'am? All right, thank you. You have the floor.
You know, just a little different, so you can tell me if I'm in...
I know, you're fine.
I'm doing this right, because I wanted to speak on the Recreation Center?
Yes.
Sitting on the agenda. Actually, more likely I have more questions than I do want to make a statement. Now, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Grimal, Mayor Grimal, we're, what is the amount in direct fund as of right now? As the citizens remember, when I was up there for the last two, three months of my term, I screamed and hollered at the administration about they were over there, basically illegally, because the council had passed a resolution stating that they weren't supposed to be there. So maybe you need to look into what could be done about that. That was wasted taxpayer money. I kept telling the citizens, I even went over there, I could have a police report on it as well, that they're not supposed to be over there. As the council person, I had the jurisdiction to do so. And so how much money did we lose? Because we passed that resolution during the budget time in June. That means from June all the way into January, money was spent that was not allocated by this, by that tenth council, which I was on. And I want my name cleared for, that I was right. There's going to be some more things I was right about, but I want to explain to the citizens, that's why I was screaming and kicking with the administration, because they were illegally over to Direct Center. And if something had happened to one of those kids, think what we would be right now. So if someone, and address, how much is in that rec money? How much is in there now? And then I'm going to address, you brought up something last week when I was at home in regards to a deficit? That means that I'm sure that you have informed the council that we are on lockdown, because if you've got a deficit, that means you're digging yourself out, and appropriating money and doing anything else in this city right now has to stop. When I left office in December, my family, I was part of the Finance Subcommittee, we had $19.1 million in the general fund, and we, prior to that, you mentioned that we had 19. Then the next week, you came back last week and said we, we're broke, basically. You said we are three million in a hole. I'll address that in my next comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller? Mr. Larry, is it Keith?
King.
Key?
King.
Okay.
Keen, okay.
Good evening. I'm Larry Keen. I'm involved with the Oak Hill Cemetery, which I've been down there since 2007. And I just wanted to bring it to all your attention, seeing all new people I don't really know. But anyways, I do know Tim and Mike and so on some. But my concern is Oak Hill Cemetery with the preservation of it and each and every one of the council members up here. I know it's in District 6, but each council member should be aware of the Oak Hill Cemetery. And what I'd like to say is that we've had some DPW people involved down there, which Al Cooley I've dealt with, you know, which he's helped cemetery a lot. And that's what I like to see and see more of through the city and through Al. And I, I thank quite a bit of them because I, we've handled different affairs for about three years, that's quite a while, to do with Oak Hill, getting things done, things of that manner. So, I'll end my, end it at that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. President McGinnis, that concludes agenda address.
Thank you. And so, to clarify, that resident was speaking on the item of the agenda for the consideration of Al Cooley for the position with the Department of Public Works that we'll be discussing this evening. So, thank you for being here and speaking in support of that. That concludes agenda address. We now are at the other side. First, is there a motion to approve a city council resolution celebrating the global cultural impact of Pontiac Jones Brothers?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Nicholson. We now have a motion before us. Anyone wish to speak on it this evening? Councilwoman Rutherford, who represents District 1, had advocated very strongly for this particular resolution in terms of the three brothers, Hank Jones, Thad Jones, and Elvin Jones. You may have noticed this evening when you came into the council, excuse me, the City Hall, that in the lobby, there was some display that just really scratches the surface about the deep and really transformational impact they had on American and global culture and not only the specific genre of jazz, but music overall. And we encourage you to learn more about them, familiarize yourself. These were three brothers that grew up in Pontiac, attended Pontiac schools, lived at 74 Orchard Lake Road and 129 Bagley Street. And they were of 10 siblings. It's an amazing story of the great migration of African-American families coming up north and specifically to Pontiac for gainful employment in the automotive industry, but then really shaping Pontiac, but also our region, our state, our nation, and our global culture by really excelling in so many different fields and in their instance, music. And so, the end of the resolution, you'll notice that we make the point to say that there are many opportunities for us to creatively infuse the story of the Jones Brothers in celebrating and marking them on the terrain and in the curriculum and identifying them and their significance in the community. And so, we're formally, as a council, making that statement and saying that that is a priority for our city government. Anyone else wish to have the floor? And I know I was speaking on behalf of Councilwoman Rutherford, because she would have said a lot of that if she was sitting there. Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
Yes, I would just like to say, though, I'm not familiar with the Jones Brothers. I do think this is a wonderful opportunity for us to tap into the rich history of our city, and I applaud the work that's been done. I know that there is a committee working on this to try to bring in place all of the cultural aspects of Bagley Street, Black history. I can remember when Chris Northcross, the Cooley Drug Store was still on Bagley. So, there's just a wonderful, rich history here that this activity incorporates. And anytime that we, as a city, can leverage the rich history of our city, we're definitely going in the right direction. So, I applaud the work that's being done here and fully support the resolution.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to have the floor? Speakers list being exhausted. Please proceed to the roll call, Clerk Doyle, on approval of the council resolution celebrating the global cultural impact of Pontiac's Jones Brothers.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the council resolution noting Pontiac Creative Arts Center's Spotlight of Black Artists?
Moved by Carrington?
Support.
It's been moved by President Protam Carrington and seconded by Councilman Nicholson. Wanted to draw attention that there are a number of opportunities for a tradition that's continuing in the community, that this month, there is an exhibit, there is an artist talk with Carol Morosso, as well as a painting workshop that focuses on celebrating Black beauty and Black excellence. Those are happening throughout the month of February at the Historic Pontiac Creative Arts Center, 47 Williams Street. Want to give a shout out to Quincy Stewart in the audience, who in the past has served as president of the Creative Arts Center Board and helped that, continue that legacy of the Creative Arts Center, celebrating the rich, rich culture, creativity, and talent of Black artists, Black performers from our community and throughout the region. So, we encourage you, and there's a little bit of a display down in the main floor of City Hall about that as well. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion on adoption of the council resolution noting Pontiac Creative Arts Center's Spotlight of Black Artists. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution designated February 2022 as United Way for Southeastern Michigan 211 Month?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I heard a second. All right. Moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Parker. Is there a motion to amend the resolution so that way it's 211 day and specifically February 11th, 2022, as 211 day? So, it would be the title and then, I believe, the first whereas. So, instead of it being the month, it is 211, is 211 day. So, that's the play on it, different cities and townships around the region for February 11th, drawing attention to the services that 211 offers.
A point of information. Can you say for the community benefit what the change is and to as why we're making the change?
Sure. There's a few rationales that I'll let others speak to it, but partially, we've already declared February is Black History Month, so we've already stated what the month was. And so, this is identifying the day, but we still want to encourage Pontiac residents to know about the resources that through United Way for Southeastern Michigan 211, when you dial that number, it can connect you with services and resources. And I'm sorry, I don't have the resolution right in front of me. If, so you could, either of you could state it too, but it takes, in the headline, or the title, rather, instead of it being 211 month, it's 211 day. And the first, therefore be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council designates that February 11th, 2022, be recognized as United Way for Southeastern Michigan 211 Day. So, it's what's a few months for day. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Speakers list exhausted. A roll call on approval of the council, oh, I'm sorry, we're on the amendment roll call. So, with that, notice further discussion on the amendment.
So moved on the amendment.
I think we already moved it. Oh, did, oh, okay. So, now we have a motion. I was talking too much about something that wasn't even moved yet. So, it's moved by Nicholson.
Support.
And supported by Carrington to make that amendment. Hearing no further discussion on the amendment. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
That amendment carries. So, we're now at the main motion, the resolution as amended. Any further discussion? Any further amendments? The speakers list being exhausted. Roll call on approval of the council resolution designated February 11th, 2022, as United Way for Southeastern Michigan 211 Day as amended.
Parker?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're now at an item that was postponed for one week at last week's council meeting. So, it's back now on the floor for consideration, and that's the resolution to approve a two-year contract extension with Great Lakes Power &amp; Light for streetlight maintenance. We'll continue the speakers list, but I want to give the floor to the mayor administration if any further information or elaboration you and the crew would like to offer.
I don't have any additional clarification to offer, but I do want to allow Mr. Cooley to speak on the subject if he has some additional information to share.
Good evening, council. Get my glasses here, sorry. There was a couple of questions last week. I believe one of them was response time. Currently, the contractors in the city, three or four days a week, summer times, that increases they're here four or five days a week, just depending on different items that come up. We did a look at our asset management program, overall work orders. It's averaging out to be about 20 days on response time between actual start date of the work order and the completion of the work. That is offset by, one of the questions that come up was about the decorative poles downtown. It took us a year and a half to get those poles in. So, you know, that's the order process, the poles being made. So, those work orders have been outstanding for a year and a half. So, that kind of skews our numbers a little bit when you try to average everything out. But that's where the average is at, is about 20 days start to completion. There were some questions on some specific areas. We had Water Street checked and them lights are currently working. It took us a couple of days because of the snowstorm to be able to get the truck to the spot they needed to turn the controller on, but those lights are all working. They've been checked out a couple of times. The loose pole behind 825 North Saginaw, that, I searched our records and I didn't have any record of that ever being called in to DPW at least, or it never got to our asset management program.
Was it 125?
85 North Saginaw Street.
Oh, okay.
I don't believe that address actually exists, so.
Oh, okay.
Eight, I don't think we.
You know, and I could have just messed it up when I wrote it down, but they did go check that out Monday.
I cemented it into the ground, so you have nothing to check at this point.
They, they.
It's not moving.
Chip it around it and rebolted it down, so it's tight. And then, also with me is Alan Thune. He is representative of Great Lakes. If you had any questions for him as well.
And sir, thank you very much for making the time to be here this evening. Would you like to provide any update? You may or may not know, all seven of these council members are new. So, it's helpful for us to have context on some of the recent historical perspective of the work delivered by your firm. Is there anything you'd like to provide context on?
We've currently been maintaining the city for probably about five years now. And prior to that, there wasn't a whole lot of maintenance done for probably 10 years before that. So, there was a lot in disarray that, just trying to get it back up to speed. But the infrastructure as a whole is in pretty rough shape. So, you know, we might fix something in one area and it's up and running, it's good for a day, it's good for a week, good for a month, but then it, another spot goes out, so the same lights go out again. So, it might look like, you know, we fixed something and then it goes back out, but most, all the time, it's, different areas are going out because of different problems. And then.
A follow-up question I have is that part of the potential interest of this council on behalf of the taxpayers is to say for two years, we're essentially locking in what the prices are. Has there been fluctuation with the materials, supplies, the aluminum light poles, that there would be a financial benefit to us going with the current locking in the price schedule for a few years?
Well, currently, yeah, everything's been going up drastically along with shortages. It's been hard to get material, but labor rates have also gone up a lot, too. It's getting harder to get people, so we're having to pay more to keep and benefits are going up and just operating costs are going up. So, just from one year to the next, it's, it's hard to judge what next year will be, you know?
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? Councilman Parker?
I just want to clarify, because I was reading, it says that you're asking for a two-year contract extension with a 5% increase each year. Is that covering all the things you just talked about?
Yes. And I think it was probably, our last increase was probably two years ago, I want to say. So, we were, we locked in, or we, we held the pricing for the last two years just because there was no, there was no contract at that point. So, it was just to lock it in, just to keep everything flowing and keep the lights on.
And you also mentioned the infrastructure was somewhat in disrepair, which is causing you fix one and it goes out again. Is there anything that you have in plan on how do we resolve that that can?
Not, not at a cost effective perspective.
Oh, I can speak to that as well. Previous director, actually, three directors, the director that hired me gave them the direction when they were first contracted to run overhead for all of our street lighting, which our original infrastructure is all underground electrical for probably 90% of the lights that we maintain ourselves. When you run overhead wiring like that and something happens to where a pole is hit or something that it knocks out a long series of run of lights with that one piece of pole being gone. So, one of the things that we've started over the last year and a half to two years is we're now bringing in a boring contractor and re-boring this, this infrastructure underground, so it's getting all-new conduit, all-new wiring between the two sections, so we're not taking those risks of somebody hitting a pole and knocking out an entire street.
Thank you.
And I would say probably 50 to 75% of the infrastructure that is below ground now is not in conduit, it was direct burial cable. So, it's not like we could even just pull the wire out and reuse the raceway. So, that's why new boring is having to take place.
Thank you. President Protam Carrington, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, President McGinnis. Mr. Cooley, you stated that the company is in the city of Pontiac for three or four days a week. So, exactly how many work orders would you say that the company has been given per day during this time?
I would have to look at averages to see what they're, they're given for work orders per day or per week. A lot of it is because of the infrastructure and it's the investigation time that they spend here is why they're here so often. But you'll see in how the rates are billed, it's not always that they're billing us an hourly rate for being here for a long period of time. It could take them several days to fix one item that is listed on that pricing chart that would, would not go off of an hourly rate, if that makes sense.
Yes, and I know you mentioned the turnaround time from when you, you give a particular work order to the finish, to that particular work order. Could you just remind me again exactly? I didn't hear you when you, you said that.
Okay, so, one of the issues with when we pull it from the asset management program is, say I send over Columbia, for an instance, and they have to go change a few light bulbs, that could be done within a day or two, so the turnaround time's fairly quick. What's, what's kind of setting us off to this 20-day mark is, an example that I was using was there's three decorative light poles that have been hit on North Saginaw and are down. There was a work order sent, they go out, they clean up the wiring, make sure it's safe so that nobody gets injured off of that electrical that's exposed. And then, we order the new poles. The new poles took well over a year and a half to get those poles in stock. So, those work orders have stayed open for a year and a half, and that kind of sets our numbers to this average of 20, about 20 days a work order because of that one work order. And there's others like that as well, that we're waiting on, you know, it's a lead time on getting new material, which is poles and different stuff like that, that. An example, just to get an aluminum pole, it's 16 to 18 weeks on order.
And if not more now, it's, they're getting pushed back.
If you can come to the microphone just for.
And if not even more, they're getting pushed back more and more. And just to give you some sort of an idea, I would say last year, we probably had 30 to 40 poles be hit that went down. So, it's, it takes out a good chunk at a time.
And just to elaborate on that as well, because I believe the question was asked last week, we do reach out to the Sheriff's Department to try to get a police report on these poles that are being hit, to find out if we can go after that, that auto owner's insurance, to try to get those poles paid for. It's very rare that we were able to get the poles paid for. I want to say maybe a dozen since I've been here, and I've been here four and a half years.
Thank you for looking into that and thank you for the effort. President Protam?
Oh, no, that was my last question. He actually answered it before I can ask.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And thank you for. And thank you for hearing last week's question and trying, pursuing to answer them. Councilman Nicholson, you have the floor.
So we've heard all the bad news about how labor costs are going up and materials are going up. Tell us about your company and why you're the best. Why, why should you be in Pontiac? Why should we maintain this contract? I, I want to hear the elevator pitch.
Well, the, the knowledge that we've gained throughout the four and a half, five years that we've been here is, would be very hard to turn over to someone else. There was, when we started, there was pretty much no drawings, so we had to figure out where everything was run from, where everything was controlled from, and, and basically go from that. So the knowledge that, that the people that we have out here have been out here the whole time, so they, they have very good knowledge of the whole city on what's available and what, what runs where and, and everything. So I think if, if you switch companies, you'd probably be looking at at least six months of trying to get the, all the knowledge back again.
I think this next question is geared more towards the administration. I know we're prioritizing RFPs and looking at other services and, and providers. We can't get it all done in one year. Is that the reason for the two-year ask, or is this vendor not offering a one-year agreement?
Well, we talked a little bit about this last week, but the, the short answer is there, there are two considerations here. One is that we are trying to stagger some of this so that everything doesn't come up again for renewal exactly one year from now. But the other issue, as we discussed, is that longer term, we'd like to look at potentially in-sourcing some of this work, and that's probably going to take two years, because there are a lot of areas that we're looking to try to bring work back in-house instead of outsourcing and privatizing everything, and it'll probably take us that amount of time to do that assessment and analysis. And rather than do a one-year contract, only to then do yet another one-year contract while we're finalizing some of the assessment of whether we can in-source some of this. We thought it made sense just to come before you once for that two-year period.
Thank you.
Can I, can I add a little something to that as well, if you don't mind?
Please, yeah, I welcome that.
As a department, there are certain items that we can in-source quicker, that whoever we brought in to do that work would be able to do various tasks, as in snow plowing, grass cutting, park maintenance, different items like that. This is a, a specialty, one-off type item, so the reason why we request it as a department for two years is because it doesn't benefit to bring it in immediately, because that person would be just dedicated to do electrical. They wouldn't be able to help out in other areas, and I think we're looking at more bringing in a wide array of work that could be helpful in all areas other than just one simple area.
Great, thank you.
Councilman Parker, and then Councilwoman James?
Yeah, as you talked about, the knowledge that you, you guys have gained over the four-plus years that you've been doing what you've been doing, uh, are you leaving the diagrams and the schematics for what you found out so that those who may follow after you will still, will have that and won't have to go back reinventing the wheel?
Uh, yes, we, we've created as-built drawings. I would say we're probably at about 40%. Just as we find it, we've noted down, and so it's, it's starting, but it's, there's still a long ways to go.
Thank you. Councilwoman James?
Yes, as, as Chairperson of the Parks Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee, I think that this is, I'm comfortable with the contract being two years. I think there are some things that we will be able to work on in the Subcommittee, looking at some of the infrastructure issues so that we can get a better handle on, you know, what we have, and to be able to do a better job for the residents, so I, I look forward to be, being able to work with this vendor through the Parks and Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee.
Thank you for that. Anyone else wish to have the floor? The speakers list, having been exhausted on the adoption of the resolution to approve a two-year contract extension with Great Lakes Power and Light for streetlight maintenance, roll call, Clerk Doyle. Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Six sheyes, no nays.
That motion carries. Thank you very much for your service to Pontiac residents and taxpayers.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the mayor to sign the Michigan Department of Transportation funding agreement, contract number 21-5506, for construction of the University and Kennett Bridges Capital Preventive Maintenance Project?
Moved by Carrington.
Support.
It's been moved by President Protam Carrington and seconded by Councilman Nicholson. That motion now being before us, I want to give the floor to administration and staff for context.
Thank you, President.
President McGinnis, I'll turn it over to Mr. Siddiqui to, to give you all the details here.
So, good evening. This is a, a project that we had applied for a few years back. This actually predates me. We received the award for the project. Over the past year or so, we've been designing the project, and so this funding agreement, after the design is complete, the MDOT typically sends a funding agreement where, where the funds are obligated. So this is that funding agreement for, for this project, basically saying, okay, it's going to construction, and this, this is the financial commitment. And so if you look at this project, it's about, it's a total of $570,300 is what was budgeted. 95% of that is the, is MDOT's, really the federal contribution. The city's contribution is 5%. I believe it's $28,000, yeah, $28,515. However, I have to say, the project just got let, so this funding agreement came in before the project was let. The project got let 15% higher, approximately, the low bid was 15% higher than this budgeted amount. So we're looking at now, sorry, I had it here somewhere, at $652,646.40 as the low bid. And so the match would be, the, the ratio is still the same, 95%, 5%. The match would be $32,632.32. I need to check with MDOT if they're going to provide a revised funding agreement, or if this funding agreement is sufficient, but we can bring that back next week if, if this agreement is sufficient. If not, we'll probably have to wait and postpone this vote.
Well, if it, it is deemed in order, we could always make an amendment and, and just modify the amount, but it, I'll defer to deliberations with the mayor and deputy mayor about how we might need to handle that procedurally, but don't be, don't be daunted just yet. For the community's benefit, can you share exactly which bridges and where they are located that we are talking about? I think they probably have a sense, but please elaborate for the council and the community.
Right, so these are two bridges, and here we're, we're proposing preventive maintenance. So typically for preventive maintenance projects, MDOT allows bundling of bridges, you can put two or three bridges together, and that's what we did here. So the University Drive Bridge over, there's a railroad, just, it's west of Bay Street. And then the other one is Kennett by the elementary school there, again, over the, over the railroad there. So, and, and both of these are basically concrete patching, some, you know, epoxy and, and various other routine, not routine, but preventive maintenance that will hopefully extend the life on, on these, on the bridge.
Mayor, you have the floor.
Just, just by way of clarification, and I think council probably is aware of this, but the University Drive Bridge is over a former railway line, it's not an active railway line, and I believe that's also true for the Kennett Road Bridge. Is that accurate, Mr. Siddiqui?
I believe the Kennett one is actually...
Active?
Active, because we did apply for a railroad permit for that, when we have to go underneath and do some, some work underneath it.
So it's either an active railway line, or at least it's a railway right-of-way that's still owned by a railway?
Okay. Councilman Nicholson? Uh, excuse me, Goodman, you have the floor.
I just wanted to clarify for the community that the bridge, I believe that you are talking about, and tell me if I'm wrong, is, it's on Kennett between Baldwin and Caesar Chavez or Dixie, but it's closest to the Caesar Chavez end, essentially between Caesar Chavez and North Hill Farms.
Correct. Okay, thank you. How was that?
Well, yeah, okay.
And this will obviously be something that we aren't intending to vote on tonight, and we can have further conversation next week as we get a sense of how the, the bids are coming in and what the state might provide for, but is there any discussion this evening? Anything further? With that, is there a motion to postpone for one week?
Make the motion.
Moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Parker. Hearing no discussion on that motion to postpone for one week. Speakers list exhausted. Roll call on that motion to postpone. Mr. Clerk.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeys, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion? Thank you for your time. So we're postponed for one week. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve a one-year contract extension with action traffic, traffic maintenance?
I made the motion.
Support Carrington.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford and seconded by Council President Protam Carrington. That motion now before us. To the mayor and administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to again defer to staff on this agenda item, so Mr. Cooley, take it away.
Good evening. This is our contractor that replaces our stop signs, street signs, no parking signs, et cetera, all of our, all of our traffic right-of-way signs. We've had them on contract for quite a few years now, I believe since 2016. Their last price increase that they had requested was January of 2019, and with this contract extension, they're asking for a 10% increase. We did go back to them and talk to them about if there was a possibility to, to lower that increase. Basically, the, the comments that I got back from the company was, they're leaving it at 10% because of our longstanding history with the city, that most of their material costs have either increased by 20 to 50% for aluminum blanks, the vinyl, the vinyl stickers for the signage, the poles, the brackets for the poles, that type of things. So they, they were pretty, pretty firm, and they're leaving it at 10%. Increase is what they were asking for. Just a, a few notes on this, their turnaround time is also right in about that 20 days, and what typically what we do with them is, if we get notice that there's a stop sign that's been hit, we have temporary stop signs that DPW will have a crew go out and put up a temporary stop sign. For a cost savings for the city, the more signs that they put up, the, the rating, you'll see the rating there is a little lower. So we typically get a day's worth of work built up before they come into the city, and then they'll come in and do all that work in one day. And then we go back through and pick up our temporary stop signs at the locations that were there. And that, like I say, that typically is, they're, they're usually in town, they use two weeks to three weeks of rotation is about what they come in at.
With that, those that, thank you, those that wish to have the floor, Councilman Nicholson?
So these prices are for printing and installation combined?
Yes. Yeah, they supply the, the sign, the pole, and they do the installation of it.
Is that typical of other cities where the, the contractor does the installation as well as the printing, or is it usually that the city's...
No, typical other cities have their own sign shops and do the work themselves.
They, they do their own, the printing as well?
Yes.
Interesting, okay.
And we, and we did previously ourselves as well. We used to have a sign shop back in the, in the heyday.
Thank you. President Protam Carrington, you have the floor.
Yeah, just one quick question concerning standard service call costs. So basically, if you call them, it's, it's immediately what, we have to pay them $575? I just want to understand the, the contract and...
That is an emergency call. If they have to come in on an emergency call, that's what that cost is.
That says $850 on an emergency call. I didn't even get to that one, but thank you.
Yeah, so typically, that's why we try to do the temporaries ourselves, so we don't incur that cost, and then we call them in to do a, a routine day's worth of work.
So based on 575 plus the amount for every sign they put up?
Correct. So if we call them in, if there was an emergency and they had to come in and put up a sign, it would be 575 plus the cost of that sign that they put up.
Okay. And my second question is, is that have you considered going with other companies outside of this company, because 10% is, seem a little bit steep for a yearly increase?
So what we've, what we've investigated is, is that if we reached out to another contractor, if we put an RFP out to put this out, our costs are going to be probably a greater increase than 10%. It's probably going to be up closer to 20, 25% increase of what we're paying right now. As we talked about with the last contractor, it's, it's materials, supplies, the prices have skyrocketed, along with keeping up employees and, and being able to get the supplies as well.
All right, thank you. No more questions, President McGinnis. Was that a hand, Councilwoman James?
Yeah.
You have the floor.
Yeah, the, the prices, you know, are, have skyrocketed for, you know, a lot of, of different things. So the turnaround time you're saying is, is 20 days for this particular contractor?
Yeah, excuse me, yeah, typically, I'll send them work orders, and, and they'll hang onto those work orders till they get about a day's worth of work, then they'll come in. So it's the completion time from the, the time I send them the work order until the finished date is about a 20-day average. And like I say, that's because we're, we're putting temporary signs out to try to keep the cost down, to get them a day's worth of work.
But my, my question is also, is this one of the companies that we're looking at possibly, is this one of the functions, rather, that we are looking at possibly bringing in-house within the next couple of years?
Uh, I would like to, yes. And I think this is a function that would be able to be shared with other duties as well, and it would be the start of purchasing the equipment needed to get us towards the electrical one. So this is the, this is why we're requesting a one-year extension of this one. Hopefully, we'd be able to bring this in-house before the electrical, and then it would just be working in a, in a pattern that way.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
Uh, so my question is somewhat related to this. Before we re, attempt to renew this contract, what is the current process, whether it be through this company or with the city, which I'm probably assuming it is, in terms of assessing what signs need to be replaced?
So currently, right now, we don't have the staff to drive the city and check for every sign. So basically, a lot of the signs right now are being replaced off of complaints or why the DPW employees are out working, they notice something's wrong, they'll, they'll send in a work order, or they'll send in a note to one of us, we'll make the work order. And we also are getting that information from code enforcement as they're out and around, and the general public calls in and notifies us, notifies us of signs that are down, and that's, that's the process right now. We'd like to get to a process to where there's more of a audit system working, to where we have somebody riding the streets marking down what's missing, what needs to be replaced, but that's all part of this in-sourcing and us getting more employees and, on staff.
So I would like to just flag it for the administration as well, that maybe that's something that we should look into in terms of our, you know, gain the lay of the land for the next year, that possibly having a very specific mission for DPW to go throughout the city and find which signs, whether they be street signs or otherwise, that are missing. Just for the fact of, if we're going to be paying, you know, in, in bulk for this company to come out, it would make the most sense for us to get a full understanding of what's missing. That way, we can be, we can make the most of it. Because I know for a fact, many months when I was knocking doors, I would go through entire neighborhoods where there were just entire signs missing, where people can only figure out where they're going based on the GPS. So I, I think that's something that we should, I wouldn't say necessarily prioritize heavily, but something that should be planned out for the year.
Mayor Grimaldi, you have the floor.
That's a really great point, Councilman Goodman, and I, of course, have noticed over many years now, the, the same thing, that we are missing many street signs. I know that Council President McGinnis has not been shy about sharing with the administration a few street sign locations that he's aware of, where we're missing signs, and I encourage not just other council members to do the same, but I encourage members of the public to do the same. So please, let us know as you see signs that are missing, whether they're street signs in terms of the names of streets and intersections, or whether there are other signs that are missing. Obviously, that's very helpful to us since we can't replace signs that we don't know are missing. So I agree, Councilman Goodman, that we want to come up with a more comprehensive approach to try to identify missing signs and signs that need to be replaced because they're damaged, but in the meantime, please, please let us know as you and the public come across those signs so that we can promptly fix those and replace those. signs so that we can promptly fix those and replace those.
Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else wish to have the floor? I do want to flag, since it's the topic, and this is a, an artifact from when there was in-house printing, but there are two blue boxes, if you will, that are directional signs. One is on Huron Street, northbound, outside of the district courthouse, and the other is just south of us in the municipal complex, that in theory, it's directing people to police, or fire, or the library, or city hall. There used to be a few of them, but they are essentially rusting away and sort of collapsing on themselves. So although I love history, they are, they have outlived their, their useful purpose, and so it's a bit of an eyesore. And it's at the corner of, if I'm right, Perry and Huron, the northwest corner. I have it in my many to-do list tasks to submit that to the administration. But since we're talking signs, and since it would have been a proud sign made in-house by city staff, it's a relic. And so some of the things it's pointing out doesn't exist anymore, and, you know, stuff like that. But so the long-term desire is for us to have very sharp, beautiful, and pride-instilling signage that welcome people to our community, that tell people where sort of civic destinations are, to instill that pride. That's a long-term goal of this council and this administration. But in the meantime, we'll have to do away with that, which is no longer working for us. So just want to flag those two for you. Councilman Nicholson?
Make a quick addition to that, too. When we're out looking at signs, just not the condition or the fact that the sign is missing, but also that the sign has the right information, some signs I know of, Sanderson sometimes looks as though it's South Anderson. So that, the way that it was printed, there's some space there that could confuse people who aren't using GPS, as well as Genesee in District Two, not noting that it's south or north, when the, the addresses repeat, could certainly slow down response times for emergency personnel, or, you know, your DoorDash delivery.
This is something that we're hearing for the first week, but it is a straightforward matter. Is the pleasure of council for us to approve this this evening? Or would you like us to keep the deliberation going and postpone for one week?
I want to make the motion.
What's the vibe? We do have a motion before us that, for approval. But so if there's no motion to postpone, and the speaker's list is exhausted, then I'll move into voting. But I want to respect the council's opportunity to have multiple opportunities to, to research it further. What's, what's the pleasure? Well, hearing no motion to postpone, I guess that's your pleasure. The speaker's list being exhausted. Anyone else wish to speak on this motion? The speaker's list being exhausted, we're now at a time for a roll call vote for adoption of the resolution to approve a one-year contract extension with action traffic maintenance. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
No.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay.
That motion carries. We are now, is there a motion to approve the resolution to appoint Alan Cooley to serve as interim director of the Department of Public Works?
I make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford and seconded by Councilman Goodman. We have a motion before us. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, President McGinnis. I, I want to begin by just saying how pleased I've been, and we've gotten a lot of positive comments from the community, about the efficient and effective snow plowing and salting of our roads over the course of the past month. We have been very close to completing not just the plowing and salting of major thoroughfares in the city, but also those of local roads within a 24-hour timeframe, including when we had that heavy snowfall last week. It's been a focus of our administration to really improve city services, and I want to commend Mr. Cooley and his staff, as well as the contractor with which we work, for their really great job. And I really appreciate Mr. Cooley's leadership of the department. He's effectively been the acting director now for a number of months, and has officially been the acting director for the past almost month and a half now. And we want to make sure that we're recognizing the great leadership and work that Mr. Cooley has been doing at the department by officially making him the interim director of the DPW department. It's not technically required that we get council approval to make someone an interim, quote-unquote, interim director, but we believe that it's good practice to seek council approval for that. We do not want to get into the practice of making people interim directors and allowing that to languish without council approval. And so we thought it was important to come before council and seek council approval for that position of interim director of DPW. I do want to note, in the interest of full transparency, that our intention is to pay him at the higher budgeted rate for the director of the department. Once he becomes the interim director, again, that's already been budgeted by the previous council, and so we would be paying him at that budgeted rate for the director of DPW if and when council approves his appointment as interim director. And with that, I certainly welcome any questions.
Thank you. Those that wish to have the floor, Councilwoman Rutherford?
It's not a question, it's just a letter of support. I called him last week, Mr. Cooley, when there was issues with the streets being done, and he went above and beyond the call to do so, especially on South Anderson, which is in your district. We have a lot of elderly people who live on South Anderson who literally could not get out of their house because of the winter storm, and he went and tried to find a way. And most importantly, when you have somebody who's, who's willing to listen to your suggestions, I think that's always welcoming. So I fully support Mr. Cooley being interim. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Now, is that Sanderson, or S- Anderson?
Yeah, it's South Anderson, 100%.
Make a little street sign show for him. Thank you, Councilwoman. Others that wish to have the floor, Mayor Grimal?
Well, I, I, first of all, thank you for your comment, Councilwoman Rutherford, and thank you for your feedback last week. It's an example of our administration's recognition that we are always looking to improve our operations and our services. We recognize that our operations, even when it comes to snow plowing and salting over the past month, have not been perfect. And Mr. Cooley and I have already talked about ways to continue to improve those operations. And so your input, the input of the public, and the input of other council members is always welcome. So thank you so much.
Others that wish to have the floor? Councilman Parker?
I just have a couple of questions in regards to the outstanding job that you've been doing. What was, when was the last time you, you were, did you belong to any of the DPW organizations that exists? Or are they in the...
I belong to APWA, the American Public Works Association, but we have not went to any classes or training previously. It's stuff that I've looked into and that I'm currently speaking with the mayor and deputy mayor about being able to go to those classes.
Okay. Are, is there any certifications that you currently have?
I'm certified in quite a bit of different stuff. National Incident Management through Oakland County's Homeland Security. I have several different certifications as in confined space, different training that I've had over the years. Vector training, cure-in-place pipe training for, it's called CIPP liners for sewer and storm systems. So I've, I've quite a bit of certifications that way.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the community understood that, that you are qualified for the position that you're being placed. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Grimal, and then President Protem Carrington?
Well, I, I do just want to emphasize, and it's maybe a little off-topic, but it touches on Councilman Parker's questions, which is, in recent years, the city has not done a whole lot to facilitate continuing education for employees, allowing them to, to seek additional certifications or go to conferences. We think that those kinds of investments are important. We believe that it's not just important to recognize our employees when they're doing a good job, but we've got to invest in our employees. And as a result, we're, we've already started to put plans in place to really allow for and facilitate continuing education, attending conferences when appropriate to get some additional skill sets and technical training. We think that that's important as we seek to improve city services for our residents.
Thank you. President Protem Carrington?
Thank you, President McGinnis. This is questions actually for the mayor or deputy mayor. I know that you plan on bringing a lot of interim directors and, and bringing them to the council as we move forward. My question is, I know that you, it's been 39 days, right? So I'm not expecting a, a total evaluation, but have you had a chance to actually evaluate your current directors? And what does that process look like?
Great question.
Well, I'm going to allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to get into some additional details. But, but the short answer is yes, we have begun that evaluation. Interviews of existing staff have been occurring to try to get a better sense of the job that they've been doing. We've also looked at the actual track record of folks, especially at the, the director level and the manager level. So that's very important to us, to make sure that we're assessing current employees. We came into office not with a view of, oh, well, anybody who worked here before January of this year needs to go. But we also recognize that we want to make improvements as needed, and that in some circumstances, that means probably bringing on some new personnel as, as needed and as appropriate. So we've taken a position that we're evaluating individual employees on an individual basis, and that work has begun, and it continues. And I'll allow Deputy Mayor Stevens to get into some additional details about the timeframe.
Thank you, Mayor. Adding to what the mayor just said, you heard me talk earlier about the idea that we have some, we have begun the framework of aspirationally, what does the city look like from an organizational standpoint? And part of what that, part of what that entails is going department by department and asking them, you as the current department head, what, what is your aspiration for what the department would look like? How many people would you have? How much money would you need for training for employees every year on an ongoing basis, as the mayor has said? And taking all of that, matching it with the mayor's vision statement and quality statement for, for what the city stands for, right? What does our brand promise? When someone comes to live in the city of Pontiac, what is the city promising to deliver to them? And how does the vision that the current department heads have set forth match up with the vision that, that the mayor has set? And so as we're going through all of this and developing a new org chart that we will be presenting to you in collaboration with our budget for the next fiscal year, we will be able to come through and say, you know, these are the individuals that, that we are looking for, for specific positions that may or may not change, and then these are positions that we are looking to put out RFPs or job postings for.
All right, thank you. Councilman Parker, for a second time?
Oh, this is for, for the deputy mayor, as we was talking about, and I know that the budget preparation time is looming before us. Is the expectation that with the upcoming budget that will be approved prior to July, that we will have all the positions filled?
Not necessarily filled, all the positions identified and posted.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford, for a second time?
Sidebar question to the executive department. Are we actively pursuing hiring people from the community in those jobs that are missing? It's a sidebar question, but I wanted to ask that while he's here, because he's over the DP, he'll be, hopefully, over the DP.
Very much so. You know, we, a couple of things are, are very important. Obviously, we want to make sure that we have qualified folks and people with a proven track record of delivering the results that our residents deserve. But it's very important that we have an administration that reflects the full diversity of our community, and ideally, has a number of Pontiac residents in these important positions because we know that residents of Pontiac understand and know our community best.
Thank you.
First, yes, Councilman Goodman?
Not that this matters in the, in the context of this specific conversation.
You like how we're just pivoting, using the, the inroad of the DPW and personnel?
Yes.
Unfortunately, your position brings up so many questions.
Right.
And how many of our current directors, whether they be full-time or interim, if executive offices were, how many of them are Pontiac residents?
That is a question to which I do not have the answer at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Grimal?
We don't have an exact answer at this time, but, but I would just say, in my view, not enough. And, you know, as I sit here, and I'm trying to, to think through, in terms of actual folks who you would say are department heads, we've got a few. However, a couple of those folks who are commonly thought of as department heads, people like Mike Wilson, for example, who lives in the community, actually doesn't work directly for the city, but works for Wade Trim, an outside contractor. Similarly, Ken, who does IT, who I also believe lives in the city, works for an outside contractor. So it gets, it gets a little complicated depending on how you define department heads and whether they need to be employees, or whether they just need to be in charge of a division. And as I've said in the past, we're looking to, and I reiterated it tonight, we're looking to bring a number of services back in-house instead of contracting out all of these things. I spoke extensively a couple of weeks ago about trying to bring back in-house the building department in particular, which is currently outsourced to Wade Trim. So some of those issues of outsourced versus insourced are, are ongoing. But we can get you a detailed listing of where people live when they're in either director or manager positions as city employees, or if they're effectively filling that kind of role with a contractor.
Thank you. Mayor Grimal, and feel free to postpone an answer until it's fully baked, in terms of we know the answer. But historically, the Public Works Department would have, for example, the senior centers under it, and my understanding is that in more recent history, that has not been the case, or that's been extracted from that department. And I'm thinking about youth recreation services as well. Currently, as DPW is structured, what does that mean in terms of the practical structure as it stands today? And if you'd like to elaborate, what does that mean going forward? And those are just two examples that immediately come to mind for, to whom do the senior centers report, and their staff, and youth recreation?
So this is a really important question, and it's something I'm quite familiar with because we've already been giving this quite a bit of thought, and it's been the subject of discussion. Currently, the senior center staff report, and oddly, I would say, report directly to the mayor and deputy mayor, because there is no meaningfully constructed recreation department, frankly. The, there is no parks department either. The parks, in essence, fall under DPW. While the youth recreation staff that we have had, and as you know, we've been without a youth recreation director or leader since Robert Birch left several months ago, they all really report directly to the mayor and deputy mayor. It is our intention, although we haven't formalized this, to, to really bring a, a specific structure to council for your input, but it's our intention to put both recreation, and by that I mean both senior recreation and youth recreation, as well as parks, into a newly formed Parks and Recreation Department. We believe that all of those items fundamentally belong together, and we've started the, the very early stages of looking at what that structure might look like.
Thank you, and we acknowledge that it's a, a matter of evolution, and thank you for updating the community and, and the council on that front. Mr. Cooley, I have been where you stand in terms of a department director for municipality, and I imagine a lot of us can relate, it is very awkward to have your employment, or promotion, or verification of status done in a public setting with, you know, Open Meetings Act and opportunity for public feedback, but also seven relative strangers on behalf of the 61,000 residents of Pontiac rendering that verdict. That I think we all can take into account how awkward that is, and it's a very unique challenge, what you do. You are serving, it's not a, you know, a private sector or a private employer. It's a very unique role with very unique pressures and responsibilities. And so on behalf of my district's residents, the 8,500-plus of us that live in District Seven, but on behalf of the city council, thank you for the years that you've invested already in serving our residents. But thank you for your willingness to probably go out of your comfort zone, put yourself out there in terms of this unique structure of being a municipal employee and, and having these departmental leadership roles. That's a, that's a unique burden, and I salute you for it. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the matter? It's, the administration is not saying that we have to vote on this tonight. It's, the administration is not saying that we have to vote on this tonight. However, we have a motion before us and if there's no anticipated further research or deliberation needed for the following week, we can proceed with an exhaustive speakers' list to voting on this tonight, but you're the council, so you're in the driver's seat. We do have a motion before us. Is there anyone who has any objection to us making this decision tonight?
Oh, no, exactly. I just was making the motion.
Hearing no further discussion and no motion to postpone, we are now moving into a roll call vote for approval of the resolution to appoint Alan Cooley to serve as interim director for the Department of Public Works. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGuinness.
Yes.
Seven ages, no names.
Congratulations, sir, and thank you very much for your continued service.
Thank you all.
With that, we're now at public comment and we're going to turn the floor over to President Pro Tem Carrington.
Yes, we're here at public comment. You have three minutes to address the board. I'm sorry, address the council. I'm sorry, I was wearing the wrong hat for a minute. Mr. Tim Travis.
How are you tonight? Three things. I know Brenda Carter has her meetings at the Golden Wash once a month, which are a great opportunity. And the next one is on February 14th, you probably heard that. You may not be aware, but that is also Valentine's Day. It's a national holiday for all of you. Two four eight, three three two, six four three, all. Okay. I also want to congratulate Mike for his birthday. He probably knows everybody's birthday in this room, but it was his birthday on February 1st, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And congratulations for raising, I believe, $1,800 to go toward the Historic Center. And he is, he is, his passion for preserving history is what secures our future. History is important to preserve for our future and he's very passionate about that. Speaking of history, the Pontiac Rotary, who I am a member of, will be celebrating its 100th anniversary this year. And we have dedicated the idea of planting 100 trees in Pontiac. We plan on dedicating 15 trees per district and I'm going to be talking to all of you district members on where to plant them. We hope to plant them mostly in parks and public areas and we'll discuss the logistics on that. Kathy James was very helpful going over some of the priorities as far as the parks in her mind that we should be planting these trees. And I think this is something that could be more than just a one-year thing. We plan on doing the tree planting on the week of Earth Day and I'm very excited to find out that there's other organizations that are going to be participating in a green and clean theme for the city of Pontiac for that week of Earth Day. And just to mention a few, I know the city Pontiac is involved, the Friends of Pontiac Parks, the Pontiac Collective Impact Partnership, and of course, the Pontiac Rotary Club and Golden Wash. So I think this is a great thing, a great way to start changing and improving the image of the city. And I think this should be something that even goes all the way to the school system and we need to start teaching our young kids about the environment and the earth and we all need to take part in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quincy Stewart.
President, I just want to, I would like to do a presentation soon before the month's out on Pontiac's black musicians and the history of music. We'll talk about that, all right?
Excellent.
Thank you. What is a radical? During this time of so-called Black History Month, many people repurpose some of their time to reflect upon various people of African descent, our accomplishments in the face of scathing and unrelenting white supremacy, both as an institution and as a matter of inter and interpersonal interaction here in this supposed land of the free and the brave. For me, as a classroom teacher of black middle school students, I posed to them recently, what is a radical? We agreed that the term simply means a sharp departure from the norm, whatever that norm may be, whether it is from the evils of hate, injustice, unsolicited scorn, or some innovative way of approaching science, art, religion, or even education. When truth becomes too glaring, too painful and obvious to bear, those who simply speak it become by default radical. When groupthink and the strong gravitational pull to confirm to the status quo overtakes the weak and sheepish, those who merely retain their right to independent thought and analysis become radical. Dr. King merely told the truth and from that truth, many of the black clergy, some of whom he had gone to Morehouse with, who had sold their razor-thin shards of dignity to the white power structure for morsels, a pat on the head from their masters and a nameplate on a desk turned on him out of greed and jealousy. Yet today, King is beloved and hailed as a courageous man of rare integrity because he is dead and gone and now it's safe to do so. But back during the short span of time that King was alive and especially during his final years when he took uncompromising stands against poverty and the Vietnam War, departed from his liberal white assigned role of just a civil rights leader and to a human being capable of independent thought and action, he was maligned, hated, scorned, and reviled by many of the black clergy and the white liberals who had urged him to stay in his place. During council meetings, you may ask why after the Pledge of Allegiance I always say "not true." It is not to be disrespectful or a nagging rabble-rouser. It is a statement of truth. It is not one nation under God. It is not indivisible with liberty and justice for all and it never has been. Groupthink, yet groupthink, the inability to make an independent analysis demands that truth is canned like picked fruit in a mason jar and stored away for a more convenient time. That, but I say that there is no convenient time for truth. If you want to celebrate black history, then take it from the abstract, my brothers and sisters, and become the history yourself. Never content to rest on your laurels and merely observe what you should do today vicariously through the wafting residue of history's pages. To be a radical may mean opening up a fresh fruit market, a vegetable community market for better nutrition of your people. It may mean taking uncompromising stands in the classroom as a teacher to re-educate young minds from the stagnating and debilitating lies of American history books. It may mean speaking truth to power in an uncomfortable venue like this. Radical is not necessarily outrageous. Radical means seeing wrong and addressing it at whatever cost. It means having the courage and intestinal fortitude to think for oneself and then boldly act.
Oh, Carol Wilkins, I'm sorry, if I pronounced that wrong.
It's Carol Wilkins.
Thank you.
Okay. I came here tonight to discuss with you about the retirees of the city of Pontiac that was denied their insurance and the $20,000. I went through the process of calling the city hall to talk with my councilperson about it and she was to get back with me. And also, I called the office of the mayor's department to talk to the deputy mayor and I was told that he would get back with me. This was February the 3rd of this year. I was, I have here a statement from the United States District Court stating about the retirees and what qualifies them for the insurance. And I'm sure you have it before, but it said you work for the city of Pontiac, that you are the city of Pontiac Housing. The terms of your employment with the city was controlled by a collective bargaining team, which mine was. You retired and entitled to health benefits from the city, you or your spouse. But the interesting part that has changed so much is all a part of the health benefits were changed, are eliminated in 2011 and 2012. Remember that phrase right there, our insurance was eliminated. Because in 2013, a letter was sent to us stating from the emergency manager that they had received a approval from the state of Michigan to modify the collective bargaining agreement for our dental health and life insurance. At that time, he stated that effectively on September the 1st, 2013, that the city would not be responsible for the insurance, that we would have to pay for it and that he was going to try to maintain to get $400 to increase in our pension check, which was done. And that was done in 2013. Now, I was, I started working for the city in 1996. I was a vested employee along with the love of other people. Vested meaning that we have 10 or more years, so we are vested and we can give retirement, as they say. However, the new Viva Board seems to think that if you did not retire before 2011, you do not qualify for health insurance. Now, they went to court to get us this health insurance stating that we, that we were treated unfairly and our insurance was taken away from us, which it was. However, I need to talk to somebody in the mayor's office.
Ma'am, that does conclude your time.
Okay. I would like to make appointment with them.
All right, thank you. Ms. Janice, Mr. Stewart? Mr. Bill Maxie?
Good evening, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, community at large and governors. I'm feeling good about the black history efforts. Downstairs, I see, I don't know who did it, organization, but there is a great display of heroes from, if I can use that word, heroes, of the men and women who have contributed to this great city of Pontiac. That's the first time that exhibit, that kind of exhibit has been there in the last five years. Thanks to whoever it was to have that feeling and the spirit to move forward. Also, in the same vein, I talk about our history for the military. We have an exhibit downstairs. And if you take time, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, come to pay your bills or meet with the mayor or whoever, you will see that Barack Obama's picture is the first greeting. Martin Luther King's "Dream Speech" is exhibited and it's more to come. I have a book here in my hand, The First Syndicated African American Black History Military, From the Beginning, Now to Present. It's just part of my program. I was very pleased with the decision of the mayor to have his staff assist us in an audiovisual presentation. It will run every day in the week, Monday through Friday, with history of war, one, two, Korean War, Desert Storm. I'm very pleased of that, very pleased. In the forthcoming week, we'll have more on African-American soldiers, military men who, some of them made the ultimate sacrifice. But for tonight and for the limited time, I only have two. Rear Admiral, Robert Tony, the first defender, the first admiral in the Navy. Secondly, Frederick Branch became the first African-American to be commissioned in U.S. Marines Corps. It's more and more, it would take me forever to read this book of 78 pages, but I, my spirit is high and again, you know, I'm good. I appreciate, and for those of you who have your military heroes in your family, frame it. Get a picture, bring it and give it to us. Don't ask city hall or the mayor to say, would you do this? Get up and bring your family member yourself and I'll be in city hall all this week because with that audio video that we have, it will give great insight and information to our youth, young adults, and even our seniors. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, for giving me that support and we move on until the first week in March.
Mrs. Gladys Smith.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor stepped out, good evening, council, good evening, clerk, and the attorney. I also want to say good evening to all of the citizens of Pontiac. My name is Gladys Smith. I am one of the senior specialists over at the Ruth Peterson Center and this is my coworker, Ms. Linda Simpson. We are here personally to invite you out to Ruth Peterson for Black History Month. We have a few things planned, so we really appreciate it. If you get the word out, come out and check out some of our displays and exhibits that we have. We have lunch for the next four Thursdays from 12 to 1:00. So please come out, it's free. Let me revise, let me say that. It's not free. If you buy one lunch, you will get the second one to take home. So please share that with your seniors and when you come out, yes, $2.50. When you come out, we're going to entertain you. I dare you to come and not learn something about black history from our displays and it is very inclusive. So again, come out to Ruth Peterson.
Thank you. Mrs. Laura Gary.
I highly appreciate all the diligence and hard work you're showing on my little complaint. I will worry about that later. Anyhow, I really appreciate the snow falling on the roads. Wow, I was impressed. It takes a lot to impress me. But yeah, that was, that was something. And yes, I did go to Bagley School and I know about the little party store and the whole night. There was a lot of people there I really liked. But then they transferred to some other school later on, about a year later or so. But anyhow, I lost track of some people, but yeah, some people I catch up with, some people I don't. But other than that, I'm just gonna, I got a couple of projects on hand and may slow me down a bit, but I'm still gonna, I talked to an individual earlier about the, about the property and stuff, everything downstairs. But other than that, I'm good so far, no headaches, no complaints. I just keep moving forward. So I'll just be patient and I'll find out everything I need to know because I can't say nothing because I don't have tangible. I don't like being, I don't like blah, blah, blah with nothing in my hand or nothing to prove nothing because that's just hearsay. Other, it used to be handshake was the word, but now it's not. You gotta have tangible, you gotta have signatures, you gotta have everything. So I'll slowly get there. All right, appreciate it.
Counselor Kathy.
Good evening.
I too would like to add my thanks to Mr. Cooley. It's the best I've seen in the four years I've actually lived here. We weren't sloshing along Walton Boulevard, we weren't sloshing down Jocelyn. It was actually road that we could see. They did a nice job. Number two, and you're going to think this is petty, but it's not, it's important. I come from a long, at least seven generations of people who have lived in this country, fought in these wars, some of them died in these wars. And those flags are not displayed properly and it drives me crazy every week. So I went and I called the Legion, I called the Veterans of Foreign Wars, I called a couple of other places, said, you know, what is, I wanted to be sure, the proper way to display when you have multiple flags? This is considered a multiple flag display. The American flag should be over on the corner, then your state flag, then your city flag, and then whatever other flags you have is the proper, if that was a three flag, then it would be perfect the way it is. But it's not. It's a multiple, consider a multi-flag display. And so the, the green one and the MIA flag needs to be reversed. And so, the, the, the green one and the MIA flag needs to be reversed. I'm, I was waiting for Bill to bring this up for a long time, and he hadn't, so I jumped in. But it just really bothers me because it's something I've been taught all my life, and that looks so much better. Thank you very much. The other thing is, I'm really curious, what are the little boxes under the chairs for?
Me too.
Counsel Emeritus Gloria Miller.
And as, uh, Ms. Miller is coming to the microphone, I'm sorry, I forgot to point out, those boxes are for you. They are, um, coffee mugs that say Youth and Government Two Thousand and Eighteen, and so we're never gonna use them. But they're nice, and so, uh, take them, and we have a few more, or as the night ends and they weren't claimed, grab them as you need them. It's like Oprah Winfrey.
Okay, thank you. Okay. As I used to state when I was on the council, I didn't do it for the money, I did it because I always did, you know, and I sit here in this audience, and I go way back, I've been here all my life. I know all the department heads, I know all the employees, Carolyn that came up, I used to work with her years ago in the city of Pontiac, all this. With that being said, I said I wasn't coming back anytime soon, because when I left here in December, I was part of the Finance Subcommittee for four years, and we had between fifteen to nineteen point million dollars in the general fund.
The resident has the floor, order please.
And so, now, you're gonna tell me that we are three million dollars in a deficit. I want the citizens of Pontiac, all my supporters out there to understand something, because they know where I come from. They asked me where I get my passion from, where it's back, because I walk the street every day, with, and it's no disrespect to you, counsel, none of you were there. We had no, we had no authority to even speak here, we couldn't even speak. We got out there, we got flags, we walked the street, we petitioned the governor, we will not be throwing out our city. They sold everything we have. Understand something, people, we headed that way again. The mayor said last week, we are three million dollars in a deficit. Mr. Schimmel, when he left here, he said, no deficit, or we can go back there. Which brings me to the question, Mayor, I have to ask this, you, because you're the mayor. Okay, people are gonna say, well, we got the ERP funds. Citizens, you cannot use that ERP money. That money is designated for certain, uh, areas and certain projects of the city. So, we in a three million dollar deficit. That means we in trouble, city of Pontiac. That means we are back to going to be answered to somebody if we don't get our butts straight here. There's a problem, three million dollars, when I left five weeks ago, we had nineteen point one in the budget. So, my question to you, Mayor, is, what is the status of the forensic audit? Because that's very important. That's what I always was waiting for when I was sitting on the other side, I kept seeing, when you get in. And I'm gonna be honest, and this is not criticizing you, I haven't seen anything change but your deputy mayor. These are the same people I work with. I mean, the residents said they wanted the council to go, there's nothing wrong with that. We do that, but the council don't run anything, we just carry the message for them. I know Mr. Cooley, I know all of the employees. And see, that's the thing about Pontiac is so small, it's family, we know each other, we know, I know what's going on. And I'm gonna cut this short, I'm just gonna ask you, did Mr. Carrington from the Finance Committee, not that Mr. Carrington, did he help find that deficit for you? If so, that's a conflict of interest, because guess what? He was here working when he knew that we had a deficit. See, that deficit didn't just come up, it must have been there all the time. And I'm gonna end with this, I'll be back in a couple of weeks, I'm gonna tell you about the election for November second, I'm collecting my information. There was some irregularity, there's some criminal behavior with that November second election. I'll be back with evidence.
All right, thank you. Mr. Johnenden, uh, is it Watermer?
That was from Representative Carter's office.
Oh, okay. Mr. Allen Thel? Mayor Emeritus, uh, Ledger Waterman.
Before you leave, my sisters, I want to say how beautiful you look, and thanks for increasing the participation at, uh, Ruth Peterson Center. Good, uh, good job. I came because I ran out of time last week. I was talking about Maynard Court, as you remember, and I said I would come back to finish my comments. Uh, and for those who don't know, Maynard Court is the problematic tenancy problem where we had a resident evicted, even though that was against the agreement. We had worked out with the landlord over there, who has had multiple properties with multiple code violations, and one of the worst of which that was taken care of under my administration, one of the things we pushed for, was the seepage of raw sewage, uh, which has, had gone into the Clinton River. Uh, but anyway, uh, even though I'm on sabbatical, I felt compelled to come back and to finish those statements. But before we do that, um, deputy mayor and mayor, uh, you had been asked about the Youth Recreation Center, were there three point two million dollars left? Yes, it is still in the budget, it is still restricted, as the council restricted it originally. They were going to use that to purchase the Gulf Drive Center, and one of the things I'm very proud of was when the people passed the millage in two thousand and eighteen, they did so to restore youth activities and to have a center. The emergency manager had taken away all four centers. We were able to restore another center, we looked at various places, finally found the Gulf Drive. Later on, the council decided not to purchase that, but they left the money restricted so that they could have a center eventually, maybe even redo the E-Walt Center, which we have done a feasibility study for. Department of Finance does have that information. But what I did want to go and complete my comments is, uh, one of the things I felt compelled to talk about was that, when I went and made a site visit to the residents at Maynard Court, I promised them that I would find out some of the issues they're concerned with. Number one, uh, why the repairs had not been made to their apartments. Uh, they've taken out, the landlord has taken out the permit, but I don't know whether they've done the repairs yet. Number two, that they were not supposed to evict anybody while the landlord was doing the, uh, the repairs. So, find out that for me, please. Also, some of them seem to be thinking they're paying their rent to the Pontiac Housing Authority. What is the relationship with the Pontiac Housing Authority, and why would they be collecting rent? Number three, which baffled me entirely, was that the same landlord they were talking about was the landlord who they, the Pontiac Housing Authority had sold their headquarters to. So, it's almost like they're complicit here. So, I'd like you, uh, to help to find that out. I did my part to make sure that the landlord was going according to the compliance in terms of cleaning up the sewage. He was also supposed to do the repairs, as I said, some of those people were living under conditions. There were roof leaks, uh, one lady said she had to use a tube to collect all the water coming from the roof. Repairs that were promised, I'd like to make sure that you guys follow up and make sure our code enforcement enforces that and they get that done. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Carlos Moore? Not present? President McGinnis, that concludes, uh, public comment.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Carrington. We move now to closing comments. Mayor Tim Greimel, you have the floor.
Is it possible for me to speak even though I didn't sign up?
Uh, unfortunately, no, our council rules require the sign up prior to the beginning of the meeting. Thank you, sir. Mayor Greimel, you have the floor for seven minutes.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, I want to begin by sharing some information, uh, about the situation regarding, uh, retiree healthcare for Pontiac retirees. And, uh, Ms. Wilkins, I was not aware that you had reached out to my office, uh, five days ago. I'm going to make sure that, that I personally follow up with you tomorrow. I, I believe the deputy mayor may have, uh, spoken with you out in the hall this evening, uh, in follow-up to your comments, but I'll make sure to also, uh, personally follow up with you tomorrow. It's very important, uh, that we address your concerns and answer your questions fully. The, uh, terms of the reinstatement of retiree healthcare are governed by a settlement agreement that was entered into by the CIPRIA plaintiffs, that's the city of Pontiac retirees plaintiffs who brought the lawsuit, uh, back when the emergency manager was here and eliminated retiree healthcare. Uh, those plaintiffs brought that lawsuit, uh, to, uh, try to reinstate, uh, retiree healthcare. Uh, that settlement agreement was entered into, uh, several years ago, uh, and provided for the reinstatement of retiree healthcare in accordance with the terms of that settlement agreement. Uh, I have heard, uh, the same concern expressed from some other retirees about this question as to whether retirees had retired before, uh, this date, uh, uh, over ten years ago now. Uh, and so, uh, I've started digging into that question. The, uh, settlement agreement, in my view, is a little bit ambiguous about that, it's a little unclear about that, uh, based on the language in the settlement agreement, which I've read. Uh, so I'll follow up with you, uh, about that, uh, when I reach out to you tomorrow. Uh, the, uh, retiree healthcare was to be reinstated by February first. Uh, this was a high priority for me when I became, uh, mayor in early January, to make sure that that happened. Uh, it has happened for those who are believed to be eligible under the terms of that settlement agreement, uh, and again, I realize that there's some question about those terms of the settlement agreement. Uh, there has, however, been, been some challenges, uh, in terms of issuing the new health insurance cards. And so, while many retirees have gotten the new health insurance cards, both for, uh, vision and for, uh, standard physical healthcare, some have not. Uh, and so, I want to share information with anyone who's, who's out there, who's, has not yet gotten those cards. If you have not received your health insurance card, please call BENISIS, which is the, uh, Healthcare Benefit Administrator, at eight eight eight, that's the toll-free number, eight 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 six four 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 nine seven seven. Uh, they can also, uh, help you, if you haven't gotten your cards, they can give you information about how to access those healthcare services and have insurance pay for them until your cards arrive in the mail. Uh, everyone should have received their dental insurance cards, because those were mailed out by Delta Dental back, uh, uh, well, those, those were just sent out last week, actually. So, you may not have received them yet, but if you haven't received them yet, they should be coming very, very shortly. Uh, the other thing that's very important is there is a open house that's going to occur at the Bowen Senior Center this February twenty-fourth, that's February twenty-fourth, from three PM to seven PM, to answer questions that retirees may have about their healthcare benefits. Um, so, uh, again, if you have questions about this, feel free to reach out to us or your council members, or, uh, the best place to start is that BENISIS phone number that I shared, because they are the healthcare administrator. Uh, I also want to, uh, share some information about, uh, the budget. I want to be, uh, clear about some of this, because there seems to be some misunderstanding out there in the community. When, uh, I referenced a three million dollar deficit, I am talking about a structural year-to-year deficit. In other words, for this fiscal year, the budget that passed spends more than three million dollars than it takes in in revenue. That does not mean that the fund balance is depleted, there is still a fund balance, and that fund balance at the beginning of this fiscal year, July first of last year, was about twenty-two million dollars, of which three point two million dollars was dedicated and restricted to the Youth Recreation Center in answer to some of the questions that have come up. And that is still in that restricted category of the general fund balance. However, because we're spending approximately three million dollars more than we're taking in this year, that twenty-two million dollar general fund balance will drop to approximately a nineteen million dollar general fund balance. It's important to note as well that we've uncovered that, uh, there's, uh, an additional approximately eight million dollar year-to-year deficit in a number of other funds in the city, other than the general fund. Uh, much of that spending is on capital investments like roads and other one-time expenditures. Uh, but obviously, the, this deficit spending, although we have fund balance, is not sustainable long-term. And so, we wanted to be very transparent with the public about the fact that this current year, the city was budgeted to spend more money than it's taken in, and we need to make sure that we're doing a systematic assessment. Number one, we're working to determine how much of that deficit spending is truly one-time capital expenditures or one-time projects. In addition, uh, we need to figure out if the city can provide adequate services this coming fiscal year, uh, without engaging in deficit spending. And then finally, we need to assess what changes need to be made in order to avoid unnecessary deficit spending this coming fiscal year. That's very important, uh, in advance of us preparing a proposed budget, uh, for council to review. In a similar vein, I want to, uh, make clear that we have gotten responses for the forensic audit. Responses were received yesterday. Uh, that was the deadline to receive responses for the RFP for the forensic audit, and we will be prepared to bring a proposal for a specific forensic auditor before council on February twenty-second, uh, for approval. Uh, that's very important as we delve into some of the details around the spending questions that we've begun to unearth. Uh, we've also put out an RFP for web design. Responses are due for that by early March. Uh, I think everybody understands and acknowledges that there's a huge need for improvement when it comes to our website for the city, uh, and so, we're working very diligently on that. Uh, I also want to, uh, encourage people to apply for commissions. Uh, that includes the Planning Commission and Arts Commission, and, uh, many of the appointments there, almost all the appointments there, uh, either the original appointments or the reappointments were never approved by council as required by state law, uh, city ordinance, and the city charter. Uh, and so, we're soliciting appointments so that we can make decisions moving forward. We're in the process of notifying those who have been serving on those commissions that their appointments and terms have expired as a result of the lack of city council approval. We're also likely to make at least some changes to the Marijuana Commission that hears marijuana appeals, and we encourage people to apply for those positions as well. All of, uh, the applications for those boards and commissions can be made by going to the city's website and going under the clerk session, and there is a link to click to apply for boards and commissions. So, please do so, because we're going to be making some of these decisions as soon as next week, so I encourage people to apply over the coming week. Uh, I also want to emphasize that my administration, as well as city council people, have been looking into some of the concerns surrounding the Pontiac Housing Commission, and so, we've been in touch with the Pontiac Housing Commission and asking questions to get some answers about what the connection has been between the Pontiac Housing Commission and Maynard Court. Uh, I also want to, uh, very quickly just answer some of the questions that were raised about the Youth Recreation Millage. At the beginning of this fiscal year, the fund balance there was eight hundred nineteen thousand dollars, the fund balance for the operations of youth recreation. That was budgeted to drop to approximately six hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars by the end of this fiscal year. To answer the question about how much has been spent on the lease at Gulf Drive that we, uh, have terminated, as I mentioned earlier, uh, if you take the twenty-six thousand dollars per month that was being spent there, and you multiply it by seven months roughly, that comes to approximately a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, to answer that question. And the last thing I'd like to touch on, uh, is just that, uh, the, uh, city of Auburn Hills, although they have not made a formal decision yet regarding SMART, is moving forward in the direction, it appears, of withdrawing from SMART, and they have a meeting this February twenty-first, uh, so there's some real urgency here. There are a couple of city council people there who want to stay in SMART. Uh, I've been in touch with them, as well as some city council people who want to leave SMART, uh, and I'll be following up with you, President McGinnis, about, uh, some strategies we can employ to try to persuade them to do the right thing and stay part of that important transit system. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, Clerk Doyle, closing comments.
No comments, Mr. President.
Thank you. From Rockwell to Rapid Street in District One, Councilman Rutherford.
Good evening. Um, I have a couple of announcements, but I want to read something really quick. Nina Simone was good trouble. Angela Davis was good trouble. Betty Shabazz was good trouble. Coretta Scott King was good trouble. Dr. Willie B. Aldrich was good trouble. And I hope one day to be called Melanie Rutherford, good trouble. Good trouble doesn't mean that you're looking for a fight, what it means is that you see something wrong and you want to fix it, and you want it to be good, and you don't mind making the trouble to make it happen. I think oftentimes, as African American women, we are labeled that we're difficult or outspoken, because we say the things that make other people feel uncomfortable. I see, I sit on the Pontiac Housing Commission, and I can say that me and Tim, uh, excuse me, Mayor Greimel have been in talks about how to improve, how to be better about it. I also sit on the library board. I sit on all these different facilities before one reason only, and that is to do the best and to do the due diligence of my community. It is so easy to point the finger at the outspoken person. It is so easy to say that there is some corruption, but how much easier would it be if we actually got to the root of the problem and asked me having effective communication? If we can't communicate effectively, we will not be the change we want to be. On February the thirteenth, which is this Saturday, I have a first meeting called "C...". On February 13th, which is this Saturday, I have a first meeting called Coffee and Conversations going to be at the Alley Cat. I welcome all the good trouble. I welcome the suggestions. I welcome for us to come to the table and say we're going to be about the mission of being faith-driven and not fear-driven. Secondly, tomorrow, we have a meeting at the Pontiac Housing Commission. It's at 3:30. You're welcome to attend because I again welcome the good trouble. I welcome having those good communications. I welcome us getting to the root of the problem so that we can be solution-oriented. Lastly, tomorrow is going to be my first meeting for Public Safety Mental Health. I mention this to say because in the last several weeks, several African-American members of our community have felt so hopeless that they decided to take their life. Even people who have served in the political field, and that's scary to me because they feel like they have to be the strong friend, that they have to be perfect, that they have to speak up for the less fortunate, or they have to be, as some people say, woke. I implore you to get involved. Please write que, excuse me, please send your concerns and your comments so that we can get to the root of the problem and we can be solution-oriented. I don't want to see another person who serves in government feeling like they can't talk to somebody that they take their own life because they are causing good trouble. I say good evening.
From District 2, Naomi to Niagara, it's Nicholson.
Those streets are actually very close together.
I have to go with what started with N.
Thank you. I appreciate the effort. So want to thank the administration again for another week of responsiveness and support. And I think, you know, I keep hearing there is a honeymoon phase. I intend to make sure, at least in District 2, that that is not the case, that it continues the way it has been. So thank you again. A couple of items. The mayor mentioned boards and commissions. If anyone in the room is interested, I have the printed applications. We really, really want to get these rolling, so you can grab those from me if you want, or else you can go to the Clerk's webpage and get those submitted. Those deadlines are approaching as a lot of these groups need to start meeting because they have a lot of business on their plate. In District 2, we've got, again, I mentioned before, the Community Projects effort in trying to gather all of that information. There are links digitally. I have the paper copy as well. If you have ideas for what our community projects in District 2 should be, please do fill that out. We have until the end of this month to gather ideas. Then the group that has decided to look at those, we call it the IFC Committee, that's Ideas, Feasibility, and Cost, will gather together and sort through those ideas and see how much we can maximize those dollars and get some great and impactful community projects rolling. Tim Travis also mentioned Earth Day. With that group, District 2 is making a very concerted effort to adopt every single street in our district. If you'd like to sign up for a street, I have the paper sign up. But you could also do that at surveymonkey.com/dtoearthday. Those links for those digital copies are both on my council page, as well as on Nextdoor and Facebook, so please do get involved. If you are just passionate about cleaning a street, you can sign up. You don't have to live on that street. We're happy to take your help and your support. We, you know, one point I want to make personally, it's very frustrating to have someone come to public comment and ask a lot of questions and then leave without the answers. These answers, if you come to seek and ask the question, stay for the answer. We have answers. And I think, you know, the mayor does a really good job at making my point to address every single one of those questions in his remarks, and we want to. So if you're not staying, at least, please look up the answer as you watch back the footage from tonight's meeting. I hope that it is insightful and impactful, and we're here all week. You don't have to wait for a council meeting to ask these questions. We are, I can tell you, when I come in, there's at least two of the rest of my colleagues sitting in their offices. Many of us are here every single day. So please utilize our phone numbers, our email addresses. You don't have to wait. You can ask the question. Typically, what I will say is there's a reason behind why you don't stay for the answer for that question. You don't want the answer. You want to ask the question. You want to cause a ruckus. You want to create a frenzy. There is no frenzy to be created. We are here doing very, very good, very diligent work every week.
Thank you. From Montcalm to Merrimack, it's McHale. Councilman Goodman, your closing comments.
I was definitely going to try to see if you were going to struggle with that one a little bit.
I could get grandy. I couldn't find another one in my brain.
Well, first thing I want to say is, because this has been stuck in my mind since the public comment, one of my favorite definitions for the word radical comes from Angela Davis, which means, radical means grasping things at the root. And I think that in terms of our city government and what we should be attempting to do, when we talk about doing radical things, as Mr. Quincy Stewart pointed out, the city has to be willing to be radical, especially in this way, grasping our problems at the root. Because for us to get to where we need to go, we can't do patches, we can't do sweeping under the rug, we have to grasp the problem at the root. Outside of that, the first District 3 community meeting will be held February 24th, the day before my birthday, on Zoom from 5:00 to 6:00. The information on how to get to the Zoom will be coming up in the next couple of weeks once I figure out how to get a Zoom that lasts an hour personally. So there's that. In addition to that, there are a number of forms that will be available via my council website page, as well as my council Facebook, which will include a version of Councilman Nicholson's Community Project Fund Sheet that you can fill out via Google Form with some of the same exact questions. That way, we can do the same dissemination of project ideas and funds to make sure that we build up District 3 the way that we want to see it. In addition to that form, there will also be a contact form. That way, I have your contact information when it comes to possibly needing to reach out for whatever different needs, as well as a way to email you. There will hopefully be a monthly, if not bi-monthly, bi-weekly newsletter to the residents who sign up. And last but not least, there will also be a resident feedback form that is also available to be filled out with complaints, positive reinforcement, or just any comments in general as it pertains to District 3. And then also, last but not least, thank you to everyone who was involved in making sure that the snow in the streets were clear. I've only been driving against since about 2019, and this is the first time that I've been able to leave my house during a storm and not almost crash. So it's extremely nice being able to drive on city-maintained roads that are actually plowed, that I can drive upon safely. So obviously, thank you to everyone who was involved in that. But that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kathleen James, District 4, you have the floor.
Yes. Hello. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to mention one thing that I was not able to get to in my Parks, Rec, and Public Works report, and that is to give credit to the 10th Pontiac City Council for their work with the, relative to the Pontiac Skate Park Project. As you know, that project is fully funded. It's a $600,000 or $500,000 project. $250,000 was given by the Tony Hawk Foundation, and the 10th Council voted to contribute $180,000 toward that matching fund. There was a $250,000 matching fund requirement. The 10th Council voted to donate the one, to give the $180,000, $70,000 had been raised by the Skate Park Project team that was led by Mary Jane Rennie. So I want to make sure that the 10th Council gets credit for the work that they did in moving the Skate Park Project along. Because of the $100,000 donation from Oakland County, it reduced the Pontiac cost to $80,000. But it just, I just want to point out that it takes commitment and it takes dedication to be able to really move public-private partnerships along. And we have to be willing to give everyone that was involved in those projects the credit due. So I just want to make sure and make that point. Also, District 4 will have their Zoom community council meeting on February 24th, Thursday night, February 24th, at 6:00. And if you will email me at kjames@pontiac MI.us, I will be able to send you out the Zoom link. Again, that meeting is going to be Thursday, February 24th. Thank you.
District 5's Councilman, the Honorable William Parker Jr., Councilman, your closing comments.
I don't get in any seats and stuff like that.
I felt I was dragging on too much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, the mayor has talked about the retirement program, and I just wanted to assure you that the Gearsburg is trying to make sure that each and every member gets everything that they are entitled to according to the settlement agreement, and to make sure that they get what they perhaps need. Thank you, Mayor, for making clear those issues that have already come up and those issues that you have been working with diligently with all the trustees and with the boards at hand. I want to thank the city at large and the mayor and the deputy mayor for certainly the good work that they did in clearing, at least, all of the major streets during the snow removal. They did an excellent job. Certainly felt good to drive down streets early and not have to worry about slipping and sliding. I know some of our, because I stand in a community, in a district that have a lot of subdivisions that have associations, that some of that, me and the deputy mayor have been in dialogue as to how we can probably improve upon some of that service that they delivered to some of them. So please keep you informed as those conversations continue. Certainly want to talk about, thank you, Mayor, for again giving the information about the funding for the retirement program and how the health care and all of that. Want to remember that at the end, that the community meeting for District 5 will be February 10th at 6:00 p.m. We're going to hold it downstairs in the Lion's Den, so please come by and see what we are talking about. We certainly want to make sure that all of this gets posted to our council page, certainly working on a newsletter, making sure we get your feedback. But we, I could often say, much like I say at church, stay till the end. The blessing is in the benediction. If you want to know what's going on, stay until the end because most of the stuff happens at the end. The good part of the movie happens at the end. The good part of everything, the good part of the wedding, happens at the end. Everything happens at the end. So I just ask each and every one of you, if you have come and you have come to have some comments that you wanted us to listen to, be respectful enough to listen to our comments as well. That's all I have, House President. Thank you very much, and good night, City of Pontiac.
Thank you. President Pro Tem, William A. Carrington, your closing comments.
Well, thank you, sir. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight and those online. I'd also like to thank you for being, actually standing abreast of what's happening in the City of Pontiac. Currently, I'm working on the six district newsletter. I plan to get that out in the next month and a half, hopefully, if I can get it out in a month and a half. It's kind of a lot of, it's kind of tough trying to do it on your own, so I'm really hoping I can get that done quickly. Also, I am looking for emails, telephone numbers, so please, I know my number is available at 313-318-7745. Please send me your contact information. I want to be able to include everyone in this newsletter if possible. To my colleagues, I'd like to thank you for your current work and as you work on your particular council committees. I definitely like the direction everyone is going in, so I sincerely thank you. This has been a blessing, and I'm going to close now. I don't want to get too passionate tonight, but I definitely want to say make sure that we continue to celebrate Black History Month this month. This city has a lot of, a lot of black history. If you go down into, when you walk into City Hall, it's a beautiful exhibit that someone done over the weekend. I know our President McGinnis was there working on that. I know that he had a lot of volunteers this weekend actually setting that up. So please come down and enjoy that exhibit. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you. I want to share from District 7's perspective, the District 7 community meeting will occur the second Monday of the month. And so for its first month, February, that means Monday, February 14th, Valentine's Day, 7:00 p.m. And we're holding them at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church at 351 Prospect Street. So let the word go forth for those that have a connection to District 7. We look forward to seeing you on the second Monday of the month, so that's February 14th, and then March 14th at 7:00 p.m. From February 6th to March 19th, Drawings from Earth is the exhibit by artist Carol Morso. That's the exhibit at the Pontiac Creative Arts Center, 47 Williams Street. And then on the 26th of February is the Artist Talk by Carol Morso from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. that night. A Beekeeping Club is starting up at Paddock Farm, located in District 7, and February 12th, and that's by Growing Pontiac. And February 12th is the first virtual class in that series by Growing Pontiac, and it's the Pontiac Beginner Bee School. They also are offering seeds to share. On February 15th, African-American Read-In on Tuesday, February, oh, I said that via Zoom or in person at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, 5:45 p.m. On February 16th, that's the deadline for the Pontiac Public Library's Black History Month Essay Contest. Now through February 21st, Pontiac United has a Black History Creative Arts Contest, and submissions are accepted until February 21st. You could win a $100 gift card, Dinner with the Mayor, and that's sponsored by Oakland Forward. February 23rd, Amazon has in-person information session on hiring opportunities. That's at Antioch Missionary Baptist Church, 318 Auburn, from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. And they're planning on some food from Uncle Jerry's and Soul Rolls to Go. That's in the works, but that's February 23rd for that Amazon in-person session. February 24th, Oakland University is hosting Dr. Jeanetta Cross Brazel, who conducted the Pontiac Oral History Project in the 1970s. And the university is actually working on sort of doing a modern-day follow-up to that, but she'll be giving an in-person and virtual talk on February 24th about it, where she interviewed individuals who have long since passed away, but about their experiences in Pontiac, and this was conducted in the 1970s. A Healthy Affair, offering free health screenings for Oakland County residents, is Saturday, February 26th, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:00 noon at Welcome Missionary Baptist Church, 143 Oneida. And then from March to June, you heard about the Nurturing Parenting Program from Carehouse. And March 11th is the submission deadline for the Oakland County Water Resources Commission Manhole Art Contest for high school students, and 50 manhole covers throughout Oakland County. We'll have your artwork on it, as well as a $1,000 prize. The Water Resources Commission has that information. So with that, I've exhausted my time. Is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
I make the motion.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
We stand adjourned at, that motion carries, and the time is?
8:45.
8:45.